All right, I'm gonna call the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners, May 16th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First on the agenda, roll call. Clerk Cox.
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gissler. Absent. Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
Commissioner Morales. Absent. Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Present.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Seven present.
And I did get a text a couple of minutes ago. Commissioner Gissler will be here is a couple of minutes, running a couple of minutes late. Next on the agenda is public comment. This is a time for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. Now, yeah, if you step up to the podium, now's the time. Any citizens wishing to address the board?
Thank you. I'm here to speak to the YWCA proposal for the $100,000 grant from the taxpayers. In the USA, since 1973, there have been 63,459,781 lives lost due to abortion. This is the number of reported abortions only. That's a lot of future taxpayers. A lot of future taxpayers' lives snuffed out by the violence of abortion. Hip-hop star Salt, from the duo Salt and Pepper, refused an abortion, which she was pressured to have when she was in her twenties. She said, quote, "Having my daughter is the best experience in my life. She keeps me company on the road." For mothers facing serious, difficult pregnancy situations, there are many helps available nationwide, community-wide. Option Line, CareNet, Baraga Manor in Otsego, Michigan. Love Line, National Safe Haven Alliance, Catholic Charities, Caring Network in Kalamazoo, open 24 hours a day. I could go on. This is but a brief list of the help out there. In a recent article in The Atlantic, Leo Sapir, I hope I'm pronouncing his name properly, of the Manhattan Institute, stated regarding the recent transgender juggernaut, quote, "Social contagion is driving up case counts. Doctors should prescribe hormones with the greatest reserve. Minors should be informed of the irreversible nature of the treatments, and the possible impact on growth, bone fragility, risk of sterility, emotional and intellectual consequences, and symptoms of early menopause for girls. The American medical system can't be trusted to moderate itself," end quote. Of course, they can't. This is because of the pots of gold at the end of the transgender rainbow. And we all know that the gold will be collected by the doctors, hospitals, and drug companies. In a word, the medical system. Health authorities in Europe are saying, from Norway, quote, "Knowledge base for hormonal and surgical treatments is insufficient. Long-term effects of treatment are unknown." In England and Finland, health authorities have proposed new guidelines restricting the use of puberty blockers. Okay, and in Sweden, quote, "Health authorities state that risks of puberty blockers and sex hormones outweigh possible benefits." As a taxpayer, I'm speaking on behalf of yet unborn taxpayers, and...
If you could just wrap up the last, thank you.
The sterilization of other taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the board? Administrator Catlin, can you advise us if we have any pre-recorded or online hands?
Absolutely. We have two recorded calls this evening that Dina will play shortly.
I'm Jeanette Robinsky, calling from Kalamazoo County. Please play this message at the 4:00 PM meeting of the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners on May 16th. As you proceed with the 2024 budget process, I ask that you not give any money to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. As you know, the goal of the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund is to increase access to abortion, artificial contraception, gender-affirming care, and doula care. That goal does not reflect Christian values, even though the Young Women's Christian Association, known as the YWCA, claims to be a Christian organization. During the public comment portion of the May 3rd meeting, I focused on why Kalamazoo County taxpayer dollars should not be used to subsidize abortion. Today, I would like to focus on gender-affirming care. The YWCA says that they offer gender-affirming care so that each person can live their full and authentic life. First of all, I find the term gender-affirming care to be a misnomer. Those seeking it are not trying to affirm their God-given birth gender. Instead, they are trying to do exactly the opposite. They are trying to become the gender that is opposite their birth gender, and are trying to achieve it through artificial means, such as lifelong hormone treatments. How can something which is artificial be authentic? It seems like a contradiction of terms. Secondly, the prolonged use of hormones poses significant health risks. According to a review dated February 23, 2023, on the website news-medical.net, quote, "People with gender dysphoria taking hormonal replacements as part of gender affirmation therapy face a substantially increased risk of serious cardiac events, including stroke, heart attack, and pulmonary embolism," according to a study presented at the American College of Cardiology's annual scientific session, together with the World Congress of Cardiology, end quote. "I do not want my tax dollars used in this way, and I certainly don't want them used to subsidize abortion. Please do not give any money to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund now, in 2024, or at any point in the future. Thank you."
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Cooper, and my address is 2106 Helen Avenue in Portage. I'm leaving this public comment and requesting that it be shared at both the 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM Kalamazoo Board of Commissioners meetings on Tuesday, May 16th. I'm calling to voice my opposition to Kalamazoo County funding for the YWCA Kalamazoo Comprehensive Reproductive Health Fund, which is being reviewed in the budget process at this time. I strongly oppose the use of taxpayer funds to pay for abortions under this YWCA grant request or at any time. Abortion is the intentional killing of a preborn baby, and goes against the teachings of all Bible-based religions, including my Roman Catholic faith, and also goes against the beliefs of all American citizens, as expressed in our Declaration of Independence, which states, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Babies are persons who have the right to life in the United States of America. If funding is given to this YWCA grant request, at least three injustices will occur. First, the innocent lives of preborn babies will be violently ended. Second, the parents of these children will be harmed emotionally, spiritually, and even physically at times. And third, hard-earned taxpayer dollars will be unjustly spent for a purpose that goes against the will of the majority of the people and provides no benefit to the taxpayers. Here are some poll numbers from the past year. Seventy percent of Americans polled want significant limits on abortion availability. Sixty percent of Americans polled oppose using tax dollars to pay for abortions. Ninety percent of Americans polled support pregnancy centers. So it's clear that Americans want to limit abortion, and do not want to use tax dollars to pay for abortions. I strongly support spending our tax dollars to help mothers and fathers choose life. Let's grant our tax dollars to pro-life pregnancy centers, and immediately stop funding abortions with taxpayer dollars. In conclusion, I encourage you to please remember your responsibility to serve the best interests of the majority of citizens of Kalamazoo County, and to carry out your duties accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Catlin, are any hands raised?
No hands raised at this time, chair.
Okay, that takes us into next part of the agenda. We've got requests for approval of revised interview questions for advisory boards. In order to, we've got these interviews coming up. We discussed this at our last meeting, but I think we have to, according to with consent or with advice of corporate counsel, we should officially adopt these, these questions. So Commissioner Strebs.
Make a motion to adopt the revised advisory board interview questions.
There is a motion by Commissioner Strebs, supported by Commissioner Hepler. Discussion. Do we need a roll call vote for this? Probably we do, I'm assuming. Angelina? Did to make a motion to change the questions, or is this can just be voice vote? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have interview for Integrated Services of the Kalamazoo Board. And I believe I'm pulling this up here. First up. Patricia Gunther. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Eric Crowe is up first. Eric is not here tonight. Okay, I'm going off my civic clerk here. Patricia Gunther. Okay, thank you.
Feel like I need a step stool.
Yeah. Wow.
Thank you. That's very thank you.
Actually, actually, would you feel more comfortable sitting down, or do you want to switch with corporate counsel, or are you, you all set? Patricia?
Yes, I am finding it hard to hear and understand you.
Okay, I was asking if you would, if you wanted a chair, or I guess Kevin got that desk down, so we're good to...
This is fine, thank you.
No problem. Who, I guess the first interview question, I'll start with Commissioner Wheeler.
Hi there, I'm Abigail Wheeler, Commissioner for District Four. The question I have for you is, what do you know about this advisory board, and why are you interested in serving on it?
I'm sorry, I did not understand.
That's okay. What do you know about this advisory board, and why are you interested in serving on it?
I've been serving on the board since 2006, and have spent a lot of time and interest in what its final result needs to be. Why? I have a brother who has benefited from assistance from this organization. I have a son who is schizophrenic, who lives with me. I have an awareness of how little I don't know, living with him, and seeing what others do to help him. And being on the board gives me an opportunity to do something positive, to be where I can support the efforts that are being made to help people with his condition, and others who really desperately are lost in our modern world.
Commissioner Strebs.
Hi, Ms. Pat, I'm gonna ask our next question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You've spoke to this already a bit, but I'm gonna ask, what experience do you have related to the work of this advisory board? And it could be also professional or experience you have from the community.
Okay. First of all, I've raised three sons. That experience helps me... That experience helps me realize the extent and the depth of the seriousness of this problem. I was an employee at Western Michigan University for 20 years, assisting businesses to get started and to use the university resources for their businesses. I was a city commissioner here for 16 years for the city of Kalamazoo. I have a great love for this community. It has been very good to me and given me every opportunity. I come from a family of 13 in the Upper Peninsula to this community. My husband was a foreman for cement construction, for Titus Construction, and raised the boys in that environment and with the awareness of the problems of the other people around me in that environment. So I have some experience. There's an awful lot more that I would like to know, that I would need to know. But I will do what I can and continue to serve in the way that I can, using the experience and supporting the efforts of the people who give their lives to this work.
Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. Welcome, Ms. Pat. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My question is, share what you have learned from working with people from different cultures.
Please, one more time.
Share what you have learned from working with people in different cultures.
Being born in a culture gives you one set of colors, one set of understandings. There needs to be so much more in your awareness of the world around you, the people around you, to be successful. Nobody succeeds by themselves. And in this community and in this country, we are blessed with a wide, a wide variety of cultures from which to learn. So what have I learned? I've learned that I've got a lot to learn and a lot to respect.
Commissioner Hepler.
Thank you. I'm Commissioner Jeff Hepler from the 7th District, which is a north part of the county. My question tonight is, what training or education have you received in diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice? How will you use what you have learned in your work with the advisory board?
Please?
I'm sorry.
Would you read that again?
What training or education have you received in diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice? How will you use what you have learned in your work with this advisory board?
What training have I received? Eighty-four years of life of living in this community, of serving this community, of being aware that this is a very diverse country and that we're blessed by that. I think that in order to be useful, you have to know your environment and you have to spend time thinking about those differences and what they mean and how they contribute. And I think what, what it's done for me is to have two things. A sense of what a small part I am of this culture and a sense of how wide this culture is and how rich it is and how much we have to draw from and to learn from. And my son lives in England at the moment. He's spent many years in Germany. But in those countries, from what I can see, they don't have the richness. They don't have the resources that we have. And we can draw on those in our own wisdom and pull them into solutions for the problems.
Thank you. John Taylor, District Five, which is Portage and a little bit of Kalamazoo City. What do you expect the advisory board authority to give to the community? And how can you help the work of the advisory board? Number five.
Yes. What do I expect the advisory board to do? To be sensitive and aware of its community and its needs. To apply themselves to supporting the people who work for us, like Jeff, in their work of finding solutions for those problems and creating opportunities for wellness. So that's what I expect that board to do, to use its resources, some of which you and this organization supply. To use them in a way that we are supporting our community and its needs as best we can with the best solutions available. And at the same time, being aware of the responsibility that that income places on us to ensure it's used properly, to be aware of how it's being used and to support this community and its efforts to deal with those people who need our help.
Thank you. Vice Chair Ray.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. I'm Tammy Ray. I represent District One. My question is, what are three things that a member of this advisory board should consider?
What should we, what should we keep in mind? What three things? First of all, that we are dealing with human lives. In a broad sense, we are dealing with a person's life, not just with his illness. So that has to be foremost. Secondly, we have to recognize that though this community and our state and our federal government and other nonprofits are generous to us, there is a limit to resources. And they have to be well-applied and well-spent and used in a way that experience tells us is most helpful for those individuals. And then finally, recognize that it's a long-term commitment, that the community can't just solve a problem. There are millions and multitudes of problems with each individual that need our attention. And we can't just think it's done and walk away from it. We have to stay there or persevere. We have to keep our attention where it belongs and not just sit in one of the chairs around a table.
Thank you.
We're on number seven now. Wendy Mazer from District Eight, the Townships of Prairie Run, Schoolcraft, and Texas. Okay, what is the greatest strength that you will bring to the advisory board?
I think I'm fairly analytical. And I think my experience on the city commission at the university and now since 2006, 20,000, on this board has helped hone that ability and helped me focus it. So I think my strength is my willingness to understand the situations that are in front of me, to spend the time and the effort and the determination to understand what's, what is required of me. And frankly, the nerve to stand up and say what's right. To say, this is why I feel the way I do. This is why I think it's right, and these are the problems with it. But to do rather than just be.
Thank you.
Pardon me. Pat, I'm John Gissler. I represent the southeast portion of the county. And please, pardon me, give my regards to Carl. I sit with him on occasion. Oh, there he is. You're hiding. Excuse me. Are you available for the meeting dates and times associated with this advisory board?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hi, Pat. I'm Dale DeLu, represent District Nine. I thought I had the easiest question, but I think John did. You have any questions for us?
I probably shouldn't, but I will. Do you formally spend time knowing about the Mental Health Board and its activities? Have we made it available to you to the extent that you would like to know what we're doing and why we're doing it and what the problems are?
I would venture an answer to say that there are a good portion, number of commissioners focus on lots of different things. Commissioner Strebs is probably our strongest in, in that regard. But Tammy Ray has served on, Vice Chair has served on a number of those commissions as well. Some of us commissioners are focused on whether it be the, you know, the building, others are focused on mental health. And what we're trying to do as a board here is collaborate that trust so that we can recognize that each commissioner has their own talents and has their own expertise. And when they bring it back to this board, that we as a full board trust the expertise and experiences of individual commissioners and their individual strengths. So I would be lying to you if I said that every commissioner understands the full aspects of what goes on in our Mental Health Board, in our Mental Health Authority. But there are commissioners that do.
Thank you. If any of you would like any kind of a briefing from us, I wish you would let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I believe the next, I believe the next person is off the Jennifer. I hope I don't get this right. Yes. So we are now on to the interview for the Public Housing Commission Administrator. Okay. The Public Housing Commission and we have, is it Cody Dunton and Sarah that we're interviewing today? Yeah, just Cody. I've got them both on my civic clerk, but, okay, just Cody. Welcome. Thank you for joining us here. This time, I think we'll have Commissioner DeLu start with question number one. That way, we don't give Commissioner Gissler another easy one.
Well, mine was just as easy. Hello, young lady. How you doing?
Hello.
So I'm the Housing for Commission. What do you know about this, this board and why are you interested in serving on it?
Absolutely. My name is Cody Dunton. I reside at 803 Pinehurst Boulevard in Kalamazoo Township. I currently sit on the Public Housing Commission. And I was first interested in it because of my work at Kalamazoo Valley Community College. I recently changed positions and I now work at the Kalamazoo Promise. But in my work at Kalamazoo Valley Community College, I worked with a number of students who had barriers to education that were non-academic in nature. So I began my career there, often navigating the systems within Kalamazoo County to help students find housing. And along that path and well over a decade later, I continued to do that with students through the Kalamazoo Promise. And I think I hold a unique position in that within the Public Housing Commission currently. I'm not a service provider, but someone who navigates services with students. And it does give me a unique perspective to be able to do that work. And it has made me very, very grateful for a number of the services we have in our community.
Thank you, Chair. Cody, I'm John Gissler. I represent the southeast corner kind of of the county. It's not really a complete corner, but it's kind of that way. What experience do you have that's related to the work of the advisory board? Is, this could be professional experience you may have or from the community? You just kind of covered that.
Yeah, so I talked a little bit about this professionally. So I have helped students navigate housing for a long time, particularly navigating funding during the pandemic to secure and keep their housing and working with a number of nonprofits and government agencies within our community to either get students housed or keep them housed or overcome barriers that they currently have to housing. As a very young child, my grandparents helped co-found the Habitat for Humanity chapter in our county. So I grew up smelting pipes in a basement with all of our Circuit Court judges. So I come by my love of housing honestly.
Yeah, ask what kind of pipes those were.
Listen, you might want to ask the judges. But in all truthfulness, I was very lucky to be a part of a number of nonprofits connected to housing through my grandparents. My other set of grandparents also owned property as well. So I know from the side of, I know what a really empathetic, equitable landlord looks like as well. One that I often look for, for my students. And then just navigating our community. Until very recently, I was a renter myself, my entire existence here, renting in the Stewart neighborhood for the most part. So I also understand what it is like to move from place to place and be at the will of someone else for a very basic need.
Thank you.
Share what you have learned from working with people from different cultures.
Yeah. I've learned a great deal from working with people from different cultures, especially my students. I think oftentimes when folks are young, we assume that they don't know a lot. But I once read a quote to the effect of, it's not that my students need to learn a lifetime's worth of information. Now, they've already lived a lifetime's worth of information or lifetime's worth of experience. So many of my students come with backgrounds that are completely and utterly diametrically opposed to the one that I grew up in. So if you didn't know, I grew up in a very, very small town in Hillstone County and graduated with 31 people and came to Western and began my career when Western was at 29,000 students. And very quickly immersed myself into learning about folks that were different from me. My undergraduate degree is in anthropology. So I jokingly say I specialized in the isms of the world. So my goal when working with students is try to use my privilege and power to bust up against things like racism, sexism, heterosexism, homophobia, ableism, whatever that is that I can do in a space to use what I have to do that work and then also learn from those that are different than me. And I actively reach out to do that.
Thank you.
Hi, Cody.
Hi, Tammy.
What training or education have you received in diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice? And how will you use what you have learned in your work with this advisory board?
So from the inception of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Department at Kalamazoo Valley, I have both been taking classes through them and then also teaching them. One of the favorite things I taught was white people talking to white people about race. Because we don't do that well, right? And then learning, I, there was a great training that And then learning, I, there was a great training that Outfront hosted for us about LGBTQ inclusion within the classroom and our office spaces. We host event, hosted events every single year for MLK Day. Where we did teach-ins and learnings and everything that came up on the calendar. I tried to sign up and learn about, most recently, the Kalamazoo Promise. We did training through Bronson to learn about where we sit sort of on the continuum of understanding so that we can learn and grow. We also all rotate within the Kalamazoo Promise through our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Board. So every single staff member is actually an integral part of that for an entire quarter. Yes.
What do you expect the Advisory Board Authority to give to the community? And how can you help the work of the Advisory Board Authority?
So I, I'm a bit of a dreamer, so I expect a lot, right? The Public Housing Commission, I would expect that we are supportive of housing projects that start making drops in the bucket. I'm not delusional in thinking that here in Kalamazoo County, we're going to solve the housing crisis overnight. But it takes a lot of concern to dedicated citizens to push the needle. And we have a lot of great organizations and the Public Housing Commission should be a space within the county that helps those be supported, heard and streamlined. So we should all be connected in a space. What's the second part of that question?
How can, how can you help? You personally help make that a reality?
Absolutely. One of the spaces I think that I uniquely fill within the Housing Commission currently is my need for information. So if you're a strength class guru, input is my number one. So I tend to take in information. I'm the one who has drafted many of the letters and resolutions for the board to review as we've gone through the process. And I like to learn, find potential solutions or potential properties or bring things to the Housing Commission so that we can make good informed decisions. And I think I bring that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Hepler. I represent District Seven, which is the north part of the county, Cooper, Richland, Ross, Charleston. A bunch of little places up there.
Absolutely.
And my question for you is what three things that a member of the Advisory Board or Authority should consider?
Three things. I think the first thing that you should consider as a member of the Public Housing Commission is that we use the word housing, but the housing is actually people. So that for every decision that is made, I mean, and I think this is probably for all of us, that this intrinsically affects the lives of the actual human beings that we live, work and connect with. So when a decision is made, it should be made with all of the information and the best intention. So I think we should consider people when we talk about housing. I think it's also important to always be learning. So housing is one of those things that there are always new best practices, always things we can try. There are always models from similar communities that might work here. So it's important when you're reviewing projects to either potentially fund or support that you know what may work in a community like ours. And I think the third thing is that you need to be present in our community. You need to be boots on the ground. You need to be out there. And you need to get input from other members of the county because you really are representing a group as a whole.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey there, Cody.
Hey.
Montise Morales, District Three. I don't know, seven? Yeah, there's seven. Is this six?
Seven.
Jim. What is the greatest strength that you would bring to the Advisory Board?
This is really funny that, sorry that you're asking me this and you can agree or disagree, but I think passion. I care about this. For those of you who don't know, Montise encouraged me to join the Public Housing Commission because I've always been on fire about housing as a right in our community and highlighting gaps and you know, being either frustrated or really excited about a process or procedure that one of my students has experienced. So I think the thing that I bring the most is passion for the work. Thanks.
Hi, Cody. Well, we're nearly neighbors.
I know. Giant estate sale today.
All right. So I'm Jen Strebs in our District Two. I relate because input is one of my top. So we got an easy one. Are you available for the dates and times of this advisory board?
I am indeed. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abigail Wheeler. I represent District Four. And do you have any questions for us?
Um. Lots, but the one that I think, you know, is more of a rhetorical question as we move forward. The Public Housing Commission has changed a lot over time. And is the current cycle with the current funding stream exhausts, you know, I would be curious in the future. What is your vision for the Public Housing Commission moving forward? And that's not necessarily one you have to answer today, but I think it's a question that we speak about a lot.
And I think that's a great question. I think right now you would get nine different answers.
Absolutely.
But to mold that into one, I think, and a lot of other topics, not just housing, lots other things to mold that into one sort of vision. I think it's work that we have left to do. I appreciate that question very much.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Right. Next on our agenda is the review of accounts payable and payroll dispersments. Kevin.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair, Pro Tem, Commissioners and Audience. Signing the accounts table claims list totaling 7,856,771.2 cents is presented for review of this total. The Board of Commissioners is asked to approve a claims list totaling 7,768,942.93 cents. And then we have payroll dispersments totaling 2,437,197.45 for the May 12th, May 15th and May 31st payrolls. Happy to entertain questions.
Questions? Nope. Looks good. Next on, and thank you for providing that information beforehand so we can. Next on the agenda is the business priorities for the budget. We've got the discussion of request and recommendation to approve amendments to county financial policy per diem payments. I probably should not, I mean, I know a little bit about it, but is there somebody that, yeah, corporate counsel?
I don't know how I manage that. Okay. All right. So I've forgotten how to use the mic, but the changes in the per diem policy were made because we initially looked at it and we're moving to take phrases such as committees, subcommittees, councils, all the various different references to that and align it with the board bylaws. So we'll replace that with the word bodies. And then we also looked at the list of entities that were listed on there. And it listed entities that are not eligible either by statute or by their own bylaws to receive a per diem. So at this time, I recommended that we take those entities off just to avoid any clarity. So they're not listed in a per diem policy but aren't eligible. Should they, some of them, if they change their bylaws, may become eligible for a per diem. And I think we're exploring that with some of those entities so that they could get per diem if they made those adjustments. One of the other changes on this particular policy is to make sure that we are properly naming those entities. And that's something that I've come across and discovered recently. Starting with looking at, say, E.H.A.C. was one of them. So the Environmental Health Advisory Council. When examining the governing documents, one of the things we're working on is looking at both the resolution and the bylaws. Some entities, for example, animal services, we'll see this come up on another matter. They were named animal control in their resolution, which stands until repealed. But then in the bylaws, they have since changed their name to animal services and enforcement. So we wanted to make sure that the policy properly reflects the legal name and the name they're going to be going to. So we'll be resolving the resolution and we're using the proper names. So so the shift to legal entity names, alignment with bylaws, and then removing any entities that are eligible.
There was some discussion of raising that to $30 per diem. I know that in last year's budget, I think we only used like $5,000 out of the $45,000 budgeted for that. Is that not, it's just, I guess.
So that's open to the discretion of the board. It's being put forward with these provisions in here. And I did discuss that with Deputy Administrator Warner. And our thought was, and I'm glad you raised that, that if the board wants to do that, that's certainly something that could be amended in this motion. We just didn't know how the board wished to proceed.
Any questions from Commissioners on this policy or thoughts? Commissioner Strebs?
Thank you, Chair, for, for Council Chair. I'm wondering if some of these bodies do amend their bylaws to allow per diem, which I hope they will consider and do if that's appropriate and there is no conflict within statute. Will this policy then need to be revised each time in order for them to utilize a per diem? Or will simply the revision of their own bylaws be sufficient?
So the policy should probably be revised to align with the bylaws. And in looking at this, I think ultimately now that I'm looking at it. So for example, we're striking Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. That one's by statute, so they can't amend their bylaws. The other one that we're striking is Kalamazoo County Transportation. That one's serving without compensation. They may be one of the only ones that doesn't have it. Maybe the RIC may be another one. So there may be just two of them that could be under that option. So the other thing you could do is leave in the language that says. And we did leave that to the extent eligible pursuant to authorizing resolution or statute resolution articles and bylaws. And leave them in the list. So that would be a possible amendment as well or an option.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Strebs?
So just to clarify that, I think that last suggestion of councils is a good one to leave us some room so that if they do amend bylaws, that we don't have to come back and re-revise this. I'd also like to see us entertain that $30 per diem rather than 25. I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, I know that in last year's budget, I think we budgeted 45,000 for the per diems. And I think $5,000 was expended total throughout the year. So most people aren't even turning in, turning in the sheets for $25. But if, what is this board's thought on $30? I'm seeing a couple of heads shake. Sure. You know, rate of, that's 20% over, but I don't think it's ever been raised. But those two suggestions. Corporate counsel, I'm not hearing any opposition. So I'm just kind of going with, if we could prepare that language. Commissioner Gissler?
Yes, I will object. I always thought it was incredibly good thing about our county that we had people voluntarily serving on these boards. And then we started deciding, well, they maybe need to get some compensation because that way everybody will be able to apply. And I know there's something to that. But when after the first year, I think it was the first year in place last year, and we had 45 grand, we could have distributed. And we only were tapped for five. I think that tells me that most of the people serving are still serving out of a sense of volunteerism. And I find that wonderful. And I wouldn't want to start moving the other direction and make it, you know, at some point, somebody's going to say, well, geez, you know, for 30, maybe I'll do it. Let's, let's just let the volunteer spirit permeate the whole county. Thank you.
I appreciate that, that comment, Commissioner Gissler. I think what's, what's basically happening is people that really need that $25 or $30 are applying and people that don't particularly need it aren't just kind of saying. But you're right. If we, if we made it, you know, $10,000 for serving, I think we'd probably have closer to 100% people filling out their, their forms. But okay, is there any other opposition besides Commissioner Gissler on this? I'm going up from 25 to 30. I certainly don't think we should go higher than 30, but I think 30 is appropriate. Angela?
Just in light of, we don't have unanimity here. And so I would just recommend that we do get a motion to amend as it stated here, so that we would leave in the RIC Substance Use Disorder Oversight Policy, Kalamazoo County Transportation Authority, and raise it to $35 would be the proposed amendments. But I think somebody should move that and second it.
I think the language one, Commissioner Gissler, can I do the language? Changing the language. So if somebody changes their policy, we can do that by voice vote and then we'll do the $25 to $30 with a roll call vote. Okay. We'll do two separate motions. The Chair will entertain a motion to change the language to Commissioner Strebs' suggestions. Commissioner Strebs, do you want to make that motion?
Pardon me for laughing there. Let's see. So I amend the per diem payments policy to retain the names of all of the advisory boards not eliminated by statute on the list of potential committees or bodies that can receive a per diem.
There is support by Commissioner Morales, motion made by Commissioner Strebs, all of corporate counsel.
Does she wish to incorporate the $35 increase?
We're going to do that. We're going to do that separately.
Okay, I just didn't want it to get missed if we were voting.
No, it's just 30. Okay, there is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Strebs, supported by Commissioner Morales to change the language. And can we get this language to Clerk Cox so that she has that for her records? Thank you. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now the Chair will entertain a motion to raise the per diems from 25 to $30. Moved by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Commissioner Morales. Discussion. All right. Can we take a roll call vote on this, please?
Commissioner Gissler?
No.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray? Commissioner Strebs?
Yes.
Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu?
Yes.
A yes, one no.
Yeah, I think if we would have went to 35, it would have been closer. Hey, next, is that what you needed for that corporate counsel? Angela, is that, we're good?
Yes, Chair. I'm sorry. I have to turn this on.
No worries. Next on the agenda is discussion of financial policy, the Budget Stabilization Fund. I will just, we've got all, have that in our packets. One of the things that, you know, if you've, all Commissioners have heard me talk about the, you know, the unrestricted unallocated reserve fund and that the level and and the different reserves that we are at. I was thinking that the Budget Stabilization Fund is more restrictive. And it is more for sort of the rainy day. Kind of the idea behind it was incorporated when we are facing, you know, unexpected revenue declines or huge expenditures or something. We can't balance our budget. And we need to go into that fund to use it. There's 2.5 million in that fund now. I think that transferring a half a million from the unrestricted unallocated reserve to that fund would put 3 million in that Budget Stabilization Fund, allow us more for true rainy days. And then we could understand as the Budget Stabilization or the unrestricted unallocated reserve fund would be more of that, try to achieve that 20% threshold. So that would be, we'd have a, you know, better understanding and have a little more. I mean, I usually, you're not going to hear me, you know, gripe too much about conservative budgeting, but I think this time, I think we probably should do a little bit of conservative budgeting in this regard in that we'll, it's more of a restrictive fund and it's more for true rainy days as opposed to the unallocated unrestricted reserve fund. But I like to hear Commissioners' thoughts. But I'd like to hear Commissioners' thoughts on this, and if this is something that they feel that we should move forward, or they really don't care too much one way or the other, and it seems like a good idea. Any suggestions? Commissioners, Commissioner Heffler, did you have your hand up? Okay.
Thank you, thank you Chair. I appreciate all your hard work that you've been doing on our budget and working with our administrator and our folks here on getting this budget kind of in line as we have been very successful with having adequate funding to improve our county, make it leaner, meaner, and more efficient and lessen our footprint, and try to make it still accessible for the public that we serve, this whole county, not just small entities. And I think we do need to have a strong rainy day fund. And I kind of support moving some money in that, you know, five hundred into there. So brings that up to the three thousand, I think that's going to be important, especially seeing kind of the not so good a financial picture that I'm seeing currently in our country and stuff. And I think it would be wise for us to be prepared for some possible shortfall. So I support with moving that in and making a good solid. Three million would not run this county very long. If you look at the bills we're paying tonight, this is just every two weeks, we're spending seven, eight million dollars or a little more, in this case nine. So probably make good sense to maybe even think about a little more in there as we can afford it.
Commissioner Gessler?
Thank you Chair. If I understand this correctly, and I'll paraphrase, we're basically putting, we're scrolling away a little bit more for the ultimate rainy day fund. And what's that going to do to our rainy day percentage not in that fund? Is that going to still leave us between twenty and twenty-five percent on air, you think?
I am so glad you asked that question. Because the rainy day percentage, you have to do first before you can even calculate that. You have to decide what monies should be used for that. You can't just use unrestricted unallocated reserves as your sole rainy day fund, and then have a separate rainy day fund, and then have a separate employee benefit fund, and then have a separate delinquent tax revolving fund, that's, you know, I mean, that's different. DTR fund is different. But in my opinion, it does nothing, my opinion, it does nothing to the percentage because you're taking it from unallocated reserves, and you're putting it into a slightly more restrictive account. If anything, it is probably a very slightly conservative move in that the account that you're moving from one rainy day fund to another rainy day fund, because they're both rainy day funds, in my opinion, ones more restricted than the other. You're moving a little bit of money from an unrestricted rainy day fund into more of a restricted rainy day fund. So it would be harder for future commissioners or for us to touch it.
To use a clothing metaphor, you're taking it out of one pocket, putting it in another, but the second one has a zipper on it. So you gotta work a little harder to get at it.
That's a good way to put it, you've got so much money for shoes and so much money for sandals, and yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioners Strebs?
Thank you Chair, so the budget adjustment that you're addressing, moving another five hundred thousand into this fund isn't addressed in the policy. So the policy itself, you know, did you bring forth the policy just to have the discussion? There's not a change proposed to it. Thank you. So I do just have a couple of questions then for administration. The amount that can sit in this fund may not exceed up to twenty percent of the most recent general fund budget for the average of the last five budgets. So what is that top amount that we're allowed to have in the fund?
I would have to get back to the Commission on that, but we can prepare that.
Okay, because, you know, I wonder long term, within our future budgeting strategies, we've heard, you know, maybe of some potential significant liabilities that may be on the horizon for the county. And so maybe there's just a plan to think about how we inch closer towards that. The biggest change, that extra zipper becomes a two-thirds vote. So rather than just a majority to utilize the funds in the general fund, we go to two-thirds in order to utilize these dollars. So thank you, and I would look forward to hearing in the future what that sort of maximum amount would be. Thank you.
It's approximately sixteen million dollars. If we go within eighty million dollars, we had about eighty-five million dollars of general fund balance left. So it'll be about seventeen million would be twenty percent. I'm not proposing we go anywhere near seventeen million for that, because that would be far too restrictive. Commissioner DeLu?
Yes, thank you. Just two things, I shouldn't assume, I'm assuming this is the blessing of the administration and the new finance director. And secondly, so why this figure? Where did it come from? And who, how was that decision made?
I am seeking the blessing of you as Commissioner, as a role of the, as fiduciary, because that would be your decision, not their decision. I, you know, it came to be because we had such a high amount in our unrestricted unallocated balance, and such a low amount in our rainy day fund. I have discussed it with our administration. Currently, I did discuss with our finance director, I'd have to set up a meeting with administration and everybody else involved. But no, it has not been discussed with our finance director. The number five hundred thousand mostly came from, because we've sat at two point five million. I just did a rough calculation of what, you know, our cost of living increases have been. I didn't use inflationary numbers. If I'd used inflationary numbers, it probably would have been closer to eight, nine hundred thousand. But, yeah, but that decision ultimately rests with the nine of us. So that's why I brought it to us. Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, well, I will, I mean, I'm not seeing horrible. I'll check with commissioners afterwards before I bring any sort of policy and talk with finance and see what they think about it, get a recommendation for or against from them. But we'll bring it at our next county commission meeting. All right. On our agenda is the grant policy. Kevin, do you want to lead this one off?
Yes Chair, thank you for the grant applications and award policy. Commissioners, Vice Chair Protem, tonight, what we are proposing, and we spoke to board leadership about this. There are some inefficiencies that have been sort of realized in the current policy in terms of how departments actually apply for these grants. As you know, currently, grants that do not require any increase in personnel and are below seventy-five thousand dollars can be approved by the administrator, and that's per board policy. However, any grants above that amount or that require additional personnel, those sorts of things, even just to actually apply for the grant, just apply, requires Board of Commissioners approval. And what we've realized is that a lot of these federal grants or even state grants have very strict deadlines. Obviously, we only meet twice a month. There are times that we're waiting to receive Board of Commissioner approval to apply for grants that then have to still come back to the board to be accepted anyway. What we've spoken to board leadership about is the idea that allows, obviously with, and this will come back to a future agenda, this is just for discussion tonight, but allow the county administrator to sort of approve these application or the ability for departments, offices, and courts to apply for grants for existing programs that are already on the books. And that's just to apply, the grants would still come back to the Board of Commissioners on a regular meeting agenda to be approved. And so that's sort of what we're seeking tonight, and we would obviously propose some of that, you know, the changes in the policy that bring forth back to the board. So that's how this came to be, and happy to entertain any questions about the process.
And this will speed up, so if a department wants to go for a grant, they don't have to wait for a county Board of Commissioners meeting to get a permission to apply, and then wait for another Board of Commissioners meeting to get approval to accept it. So it'll just, the application part would just go through administration. Questions from commissioners on the changes of this policy? Commissioner Ray?
Thank you, just one question. So this is for programs that are already in existence, correct?
Yes, that's what we propose, just for programs that are already in existence. If they do not currently exist, we did have a discussion, and I guess, you know, we could see clarity or even some direction from the board, or sort of the appetite of the board. We kind of, you know, talked about this in terms of what the board wants to be associated with in terms of grant programs. If there's some sort of a controversial opportunity out there, does the county Board of Commissioners even want to have their name on it? And I think that hopefully you all trust the administration and myself enough to not allow departments to seek opportunities that would, you know, cause some controversy in the board. So we proposed, I guess, and I appreciate you bringing it up, Vice Chair Ray, that there be some latitude that is exercised within my office that if it's not an existing program, I guess this is what we would seek. If it's not an existing program, that I use my discretion to determine if the board would have an appetite for it. Again, to accept the award would always still have to come back to the board. For existing programs, obviously, we would like that opportunity too. But there are opportunities that do come up where they may not necessarily be existing programs. I can tell you now that I know the board very well, I believe, and if it's an opportunity that I believe that even one commissioner wouldn't agree with, it would just go to the board, it would go on a board agenda. And I would have that discussion with board leadership to ensure that they're made fully aware that, you know, I'm getting ready to sign off on something, but I don't feel comfortable doing so. So I would have that discussion with board leadership.
Commissioner Strebs?
Thank you. So, and I'm really glad Vice Chair brought this up. So I hope, want to clarify my understanding, are we going to refine in the policy allowing you to have that discretion? Because I think only existing programs, let's remove any inefficiencies that are not necessary. Because I know, you know, some grant applications are very extensive, and if staff are waiting to get through an approval process to know before they begin all the work, we're losing potential awards that way, so.
Yeah, I guess what I'm hearing is go ahead and then take wide discretion on the any improving projects. Lost my place here, sorry guys. Any other items, investments reports? I did get a text from, or a call from Treasurer Whitener. He has had a family problem, he let me know it was okay to share on his wife and is expecting, and they're having some problems, so he will not be able to make it here tonight. He will have, he did say, and so I get this right. He will have a written report to the board by the end of this week. And he will be able to report at the next board meeting. So we will have a written report at the end of the week and report at the next meeting. Per my text message. Commissioners Strebs?
Thank you. First, my well wishes to Treasurer Whitener and his wife and family, hope all resolves well. Want to make sure I understand, you received this communication from Treasurer Whitener today?
I received a communication from him yesterday that he may not be able to, because he had a doctor's appointment with his wife this morning. And then he would let me know today based on that appointment, and he let me know today after the appointment that he would not be here.
Okay, what is the timeframe at the quarter one ended? That was at the end of March, is that correct? And so I understand they had circumstances come up they were not aware of, but a written report is not made available today.
To my, to my knowledge, a written report is not today, Kevin, if you had any, no, no.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morales?
Thank you Chair, and I don't want to seem petty, but I'm not even going to say, but. So he's not here, and I send well wishes to him and his family as well. However, this assignment was supposed to be already completed, correct? And per your message, you just stated that he would get it to us by the end of the week.
So it's not to get it wrong.
No, it's all good. But I guess my question is, in these types of situations, even if he wasn't here, is there a way that we can review what he has done and maybe not discuss it till he comes? But at least, you know, turn his paperwork in by the due date. It's about to be the end of May, I mean, our next meeting is in June. And I mean, July is what, the next quarter? So for me, it's frustrating that we can't get what we need, and we've been dealing with this for over a year. And where does that put us?
We're flying blind is the best way to describe it. On our revenue sides and our expenditure sides, the investment reports, while I think are important, and we need to see that, and they're a big part of our revenue. You know, with mark to market and increase in interest rates, it'll probably be a loss on our general fund. But we still need to see what the realized growth are, what the realized percentages that we're receiving are. Yes, we absolutely need to receive that. What I think we even need to know more of is what are expenditures and revenues, you know, each month going forward? Yeah, I think there's a lot of information that we need, we're not kidding. But I share your concerns, is the best way I can say it. Commissioner, Vice Chair Ray?
Thank you, just a follow-up question to Commissioner Morales's point. Is it done, do we know, and he just needs until the end of the week to press send? Or it's not complete?
Thank you for the question, Vice Chair Ray, Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair Protem. What I understand when I spoke to Treasurer Whitener is that, my understanding is that January and February are, I don't want to use the word reconciled, but at least complete. And then they've been working on March. And so my understanding is that I'm under the impression that when his chief deputy resigned, that the instructions that were left were not clear enough for them to complete that task. And so Treasurer Whitener and Deputy Treasurer Farmer have been working to complete that March report so that they can give you or provide you with a completed first quarter report, which would be January, February, March. I know in the past typically we've had these reports completed by April. And so when we're, you'll see that if, when we're waiting this long for these things to be completed, that it does create issues with financial reporting, things like that. So, but my understanding is that, as I guess as reported by the Chair, that yes, you should have hopefully something by the end of the week as they're trying to tie those all, all the numbers out.
Just a follow-up, and I send my well wishes to the Treasurer and his family as well. But this is the second time that he has not shown up. What is our next course of action?
I've got Commissioner Morales, I'm taking that as a, I mean, there's so many ways I could answer that, but I, Commissioner Morales. I would say it is not appropriate to have a next course of action in a public setting. Commissioner Morales?
Thank you Chair. So Administrator Catlin, you mentioned that the deputy exited, and there were some instructions that they weren't able to follow. Aren't we still paying a firm to follow up with this stuff? Does the firm only focus on one set of items and not the entirety of this issue so that we can move forward?
Yes, thanks for the question, Commissioner Morales. So the, so Mayner has been working on, they were actually helping us with audit, year-end audit work that needed to be completed. So their work on that has been completed. The Treasurer hasn't requested assistance with investment reconciliation for Mayner. That funding does exist, I mean, I'd say that funding exists. There is funding that exists within the Treasurer's budget to solicit their help. They have not requested that to date. I will note though, we were made aware that the Treasurer has made an offer for Chief Deputy Treasurer. made an offer for Chief Deputy Treasurer. So the replacement will start on June 8th. And that individual has some years of experience in municipal financial management, including treasury. And they are, they do hold the designation of CPA as well. So hopefully that person can be brought up to speed. What we've in administration have been talking about is working with the treasurer to have Mayner come in, in particular Phil, who was helping us, who knows our MUNA system to help bring that individual up speed on the system, hopefully give him a good jumpstart into the, the Kalamazoo County treasury world and get them on the right track more expeditiously than, than, than later. So that's, that's the update I have for you on that. Hopefully it answers your question.
Commissioner Wheeler, then, then Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you. I just have one question. So was there only one person in the treasurer's office who knew how to do investments rather than cross training? So say that person's sick, they're gone. I mean, they leave like this?
Yes, Commissioner Wheeler. My understanding is yes, the, the only one that handled investment reporting activity and reconciliation was the Chief Deputy Treasurer.
And there were no written ad so piece. Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you, Chair. Am I correct, Administrator, in understanding that the audit of the treasurer's operation for 2022 is completed?
Yes, Commissioner Gessler, that is correct. So that work is, is to my knowledge of, as of today is complete. We did receive, I want to say about either yesterday or two days ago, information that some investments weren't reconciled correctly, or maybe it was actually the tail end of last week because yesterday was only Monday. So however, that work is, those work papers were turned over to the auditors again. And so that's being worked on as we speak. And I believe we're in good shape on that activity.
Where do we stand with respect to the audit?
So we should have an update on the audit. I believe it should be wrapped up by the end of this month and then they will come and present. And the, and the Board of Commissioners will receive that report and the, and the findings that they have at any, yep.
One more, Chair. May I beg your indulgence? How far behind are we from where we've been in the last several years in getting the audit completed? And I'll tag on another one. And how does it seem that that's likely to affect our credit rating?
Yes. So the first question, in terms of timeline with audit, we're, we're still on the same timeline as every year. We need to usually have all of our financial documents to the auditor sometime by, usually it's by the end of March. We've been working through April, April. They need usually about the whole month of May to wrap up their findings and reconciliation. And then they present to the board in June. It is likely, to be honest, at the rate that we're going now, that we're, will likely be in the same predicament in terms of reconciliation and, and I guess, providing auditors with financial information related to revenues, the revenue side of things. Likely next year, my hope is that the new Chief Deputy Treasurer can assist that office and in reconciling a lot sooner than later so that we're not in the same situation again next year. But I hope that answers your questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess for now it does.
Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. So speaking of items being reconciled, I saw the email with the overpayments. And is that going to be updated in this report on Friday? And should we be worried about any other overpayments? And how does that affect the overall budget? Because it wasn't 500 or $10,000. It was a lot.
Yes, thank you for the question, Commissioner Morales. So I guess, two things. So the email, in case the other commissioners didn't get a chance to, to look at it. This was Commissioner Morales referring to the accommodations tax. And so this has happened probably a couple to, to a few times now where Discover Kalamazoo has been overpaid. And obviously Discover Kalamazoo is a quasi governmental entity, so they, they return the funds to us. So luckily in that situation, we're okay. I will say that the treasurer's office, so they have been administering the accommodations tax. That's something that we're looking at and I've tasked Deputy Administrator Cole in the Finance Department in reviewing how that's administered and who has to actually perform the function. So we are looking into that. And then the other part of it is, is that the only other payments to my knowledge that the treasurer's office makes are obviously the claims list. So they, they, they send all those out. Because the checks were sent out by them. But then they do make the bond payments. And that's another task that we're also reviewing to see if Finance Department has the capacity to make bond payments as well. So that way we can lift some of that that work off the treasurer's office so that they have capacity to complete the other required tasks that they need to do.
And can I try to answer one of your que, yes, I, I am worried about additional overpayments personally. Because, you know, Discover Kalamazoo is like Administrator said, they're going to pay us back. What about people that maybe aren't so, you know, less scrupulous? So yeah, maybe looking into that, that, that worries me quite a bit. But I've, I've said this, like, I don't know how many times publicly. But we really need to look at the treasurer's office and find all non statutory authority jobs that they are doing and, and put those into finance. Any sort of payments, treasures should be receivables. They should be payables. So I, I, I think that anything that is not receivable function should be, should be moved. That's my own personal opinion. I thought I saw a hand up over there. Tammy?
Commissioner Straps.
Thank you, Chair. Administrator, thank you for fielding all of these questions that really the treasurer should be fielding. So appreciate your assistance to the board with this. So I, you know, I just I want to articulate my, my concern. I think, you know, all of our colleagues here feel the same. But to be clear, what we're talking about is an overpayment to Discover Kalamazoo. It's not the first time that the overpayment has occurred. Certainly understandable as one is learning aspects of a technical job to make mistakes. But when mistakes are repeatedly being made, the treasurer's office also presented to us, last time he was actually here to speak with us, an investment advisor that was supposedly helping him with reconciliation on investment reports. We're still seeing this now a month and a half late in reporting to this board. We're seeing repeated pattern. And I believe I'm understanding from you as well that the day to day reconciliations are still behind. We had Mayner that spoke with us and said they had provided detailed assistance to the treasurer and his staff on how to accomplish these tasks. How much money did we spend in addition to the treasurer's? And even if you can speak to that just roughly, Administrator, we continue to invest and try to support the treasurer's office. And we're continuing to see incompetency in the tasks required of the office.
So for Mayner, it appears that we've spent around, you know, from 2022 and we brought them on in November to now around $102,000. And, and I will add, in terms of the accommodation tax, I do want to, because, because the treasurer did send this to me, I want to say probably Friday or yesterday. I just can't remember the days. They're starting to blend together. But in, in terms of the accommodation tax and the mistake, the treasurer's office did disclose to, or informed Discover Kalamazoo and, and myself that they are making changes in terms of the personnel that's responsible for that task. And the Deputy Treasurer Farmer is working with the current employee to transition that to a different employee to hopefully remediate that, that, that mistake in, in the future. So I did want to pass that along because I was on that email chain.
Any other commissioners? Okay, moving on, request and recommendation to adopt resolution to terminate the county ID program. Corporate counsel.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Protem and Commissioners. This is the first of what I believe will be many similarly situated requests that are coming forward. So this is the request to essentially, and the mechanism by which we will be adjusting and realigning or recommending that we adjust to realign the governing documents of the various bodies. So the first step in that process is to actually terminate the authorizing resolution. But it's that long mouthful of words, as Chair pointed out, because you want to do it at the same time. So you want to terminate the original authorizing resolution and at the same time adopt the new authorizing resolution. The new authorizing resolution makes the minor adjustments to either name or membership or, or the like. And I think this one, to the extent that the first one, hold on. The first one is for county ID. So we're making sure that we get everything aligned with calling this the Larry Provantur County ID program as well as the board. So there were two things to rename here and you'll see later we bring a recommendation for it for bylaws. So that's what this one is doing is getting those themes realigned and making sure everything is in order with that and adopting a new resolution.
Questions?
I think we've got this motion on our seven o'clock meeting, correct? Yeah, this, this is just so that we understand why we're doing it all in one motion. Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you, Chair. Is it possible that this can be for efficiency sake? Drop the old name and install the new one on the same motion? Or do we need to drop one and then add another one?
I think the intent is to do it all in the same motion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Yeah, I think this is on consent, but we just wanted to make sure everybody knew what we were. Transparency reasons. And then the Environmental Health Advisory Council, same roughly.
Yes, Chair, that is the same. It's just the termination of the original authorizing resolution. And for that one, it says, membership shall be established as stated, I believe in the bylaws. That way, as they go to amend their bylaws, you guys can make those important decisions and considerations about number of members, type of members and those things. And that's where they'll fix that. So that even it would be easier to change.
Questions? Looks, looks good. I did just get an email about the accommodation ordinance that was from 2006. We could put that on, Administrator, I'll talk to you about that later. We could maybe put that on an agenda item that we can delineate that responsibility, Commissioner Straps, from that to finance. So that doesn't happen in the future, at least for that particular payment. Who has the motion to come into closed session? Commissioner Gessler.
All right, Chair, I don't have it. I do have an extra item. National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation.
I am terribly sorry, National Gun Violence Day. Yep. Commissioner Morales, did you want to do that? Or do you want to give Commissioner Kattlin? Administrator Kattlin, I'm sorry, it's been a bit up since really early this morning. I know Commissioner Morales has been doing some great work with our corporate counsel on this proclamation. So. Oh, you said it? Okay, I'm sorry.
It's an annual proclamation. I go through the updates. Do we need to read if it's an annual proclamation?
No, I think we're just, we're just going through and seeing if there's any objections from commissioners and then it would just be put on our consent agenda. See no objections. It's be put on our consent agenda. Now we get to go into closed session. Commissioner Wheeler.
I move that the board go into closed session as permitted by the Michigan Open Meetings Act for the following reasons. One is allowed by MCL 15.268. One H to discuss material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, specifically the written legal opinion of the county's attorney dated May 16th, 2023. And two, as allowed by MCL 15.2681A, to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of an employee or staff member if the named individual requests a closed hearing, which was requested by Administrator Kattlin.
There is a motion and support. Clerk, will you please take role, please?
Vice Chair Protem Heppler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Straps.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gessler.
Yes.
Nine yes. Nine yes.
session.
I will make the motion to come out of closed session.
A motion to come out of closed session and support, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? We are out of closed session.
I will make a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
There's a motion to close session minutes. Supported by Commissioner Strebs. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Right, it passes and with that we are adjourned.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna call to order the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners, May 16th, 2023 Regular Meeting to Order. We're going to do, since the invocation reflection is in route, I think he's parking and walking up right now. So we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance first. Commissioner Strebs, if you'd like to lead us in that. Okay, and...
Not him.
Is there somebody? There he is, all right. Okay, just in time too. Yeah, we're just about to give our invocation and reflection. So Vice Chair Ray, if you'd like to introduce.
Yes, so I invited my brother-in-law to pray for us tonight. You can come up to the podium. And then because Commissioner Tracy Hall probably be gone, by the time I have comments, I just wanna say happy belated birthday. I'm sorry, Pastor Barry Cox.
Thank you. Let us all stand. And thank you for having me. Thank you for waiting. Let's look to the Lord. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you to say thank you this evening for another meeting, Lord God. Thank you for every person that's here representing this city. Thank you for Kalamazoo, Lord God. Thank you, Father, most of all for giving us a mind to pray. We trust you, Lord. We lean on you. We need you to help us. Help our city, protect our city, keep us from any hurt, harm, or danger. But Lord, I ask you to touch the members here tonight. Lord, let them be on one accord. Let them have one mind to represent and to do a great job for the service for the people of Kalamazoo. We need you, Lord God. We depend on you. We're living in troubled times, but Lord, you are here. And we ask you, Lord God, to bless those that are in charge, bless those that are present, bless every household here, every child, every adult that's represented. We need you, Lord God. We depend on you. We thank you. We give your name the glory, and we give your name the honor, because we know it's already done. And we thank you. And the people said in Jesus' name, amen. Oh, now, you didn't want me to hoop, see? I'm being kind. But I do wanna say, I'm a Kalamazoo born and raised, sixty-year-old, forty-year veteran from the Army. You're welcome. And our city is a wonderful city. I see a lot of things happening that are very good. I told Tammy that I'm here to try to help our city to be better. And so if I can help it in any way, that's what I wanna do. I'm asking God to give me a church downtown so I can help the youth, and so we can reach back and help these young people understand that this place is great. And it's us, it's up to us to make it better. We might have different views, but we come to one mind, and that's to make this place better for the next generation. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can everybody say amen?
Amen.
See, she want me to hoop. I'm being nice. I do have to run. I teach Bible college, Inon School of Theology, so I'm teaching Old Testament Survey tonight. So I have to run, but I love you, Tammy. God bless you, city. And God bless you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
And tell somebody you love them.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Role call. Clerk Cox, will you take role, please?
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gisler.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
Commissioner Morales.
I was smiling for...
Present.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. And I noticed we have a few distinguished guests in our audience. We have City Commissioner Christopher Dell. We have former chair of our county commission. We have a mayor. We have Mary Balkama. We... City Manager of Portage, Pat McGinnis. There's, there's a lot of dignitaries, and I'm gonna get all of these wrong. Thank you, Tracy Hall. Thank you, David Anderson. Thank you, everybody, for being here. But next on our agenda, we have a request for approval of proclamation honoring Cynthia Foster for twenty-five years of service. I believe she is here tonight. Is she? Yes, thanks. Commissioner Wheeler, would you like to be back?
We are honoring you. So whereas Cynthia Foster has served the citizens of Kalamazoo County for twenty-five years as of May 12th, 2023, whereas Cynthia Foster has faithfully served as a household hazardous waste specialist at the Household Hazardous Waste Center of Kalamazoo County. Whereas the County of Kalamazoo wishes to acknowledge and honor employees who have longevity under the umbrella of county government, since it is through longevity that expertise in the employee's particular field is achieved. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge with gratitude the many years of dedication and service Cynthia Foster has imparted to the citizens of the county and offers its best wishes for many more years of mutual association.
Okay, there was a motion and support by Commissioner Vice Chair Tammy Ray. Can we take role, please?
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Next, we have proclamation honoring Jeffrey Nichols. I think, Commissioner Hepler, do you have that?
I do, Chair. Thank you. Whereas Jeffrey Nichols has served the citizens of Kalamazoo County for twenty-five years as of May 4th, 2023, whereas Jeff, Jeffrey Nichols has faithfully served as a deputy for our Sheriff's Department. And whereas the County of Kalamazoo wishes to acknowledge and honor employees who have longevity under the umbrella of county government, since it is through longevity that expertise in the employee's particular field is achieved, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge with gratitude the many years of dedicated service Jeff Nichols has imparted to the citizens of Kalamazoo County and offer its best wishes for many more years of mutual association.
There is a motion and support. Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Commissioner Morales, are you okay to read proclamation declaring May Foster Day Care, Foster Care Month in Kalamazoo? Go for it, Abby.
Whereas recognizing May as Foster Care Month in the state of Michigan is an opportunity to raise awareness about the challenges of youth in the foster care system and to encourage legislators to implement policy to improve the lives of the youth with experience in foster care. Whereas National Foster Care Month was established over twenty-five years ago to bring foster care issues to the forefront of our minds, highlight the importance of permanency of every child, and recognize the essential roles that foster parents, social workers, and advocates have in the lives of children throughout the United States. Whereas all children deserve a safe, loving, and permanent home, and the primary goal of the foster care system is to ensure the safety and well-being of children while working to provide a safe, loving, and permanent home for each child. Whereas in Michigan, there are approximately ten thousand children living in foster care, and as of March 2023, three hundred and ninety-six in Kalamazoo County and approximately three thousand eight hundred youth entered the foster care system in Michigan, and forty-one percent live in a non-relative foster home and remain in care for an average of eighteen months. Whereas twenty-eight and a half percent of Michigan youth in foster care experience three or more placements. Placement changes disrupt education routines, extended family connections, and familiar surroundings. Whereas children of color are more likely to stay in the foster care system for longer periods of time and are less likely to be reunited with their biological families. Whereas in 2021, six hundred and forty-three youth emancipated or aged out of foster care in Michigan without a permanent legal connection to an adult or family. Twenty-five percent of these youth had been in care for three or more years. Whereas many youth in foster care are at risk of aging out of foster care in Michigan, and youth who age out of foster, the foster care system lack security, resources, and support of a biological or adoptive family, and struggle to obtain affordable housing, pursue higher education, and inquire adequate employment. Whereas Kalamazoo County has a strong desire to support our most vulnerable populations to thrive and contribute to making Michigan a vibrant community for all. Whereas the members of the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners support efforts to establish relationships with agencies and community organizations to improve outcomes for young people with experience in foster care. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners proclaims the month of May in Kalamazoo County is Foster Care Month. Proclaim that all citizens of Kalamazoo County are encouraged to recognize the needs of our youth in foster care and the unique challenges that they face.
There is a motion supported by Vice Chair Ray. Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Commissioner DeLu, I haven't picked on you yet, since it's a bullying resolution. You prepared to read item D.
So proclamation proclaiming June 2023 Justice Against Bullying at Schools Awareness Month in Kalamazoo County. Whereas justice against bullying at schools has served the youth impacted by bullying in Kalamazoo County since 2016. Whereas during that time, JABS has raised awareness, educated, supported, and/or empowered over two hundred youth who have been affected by bullying in some way. Whereas JABS strongly supports the inclusion of students in the development of anti-bullying policymaking process and allows students to form and organize groups to advocate for their own right to be safe, bully-free, nonviolent educational spaces. Whereas anti-bullying initiatives like JABS are proving to be transformative in combating the childhood traumatic effects of bullying in academic environments, as well as enhancing better outcomes for students. And whereas Kalamazoo County has resolved to be a leader in trauma-informed work and has adopted a resolution to build trauma-informed, resilient, and healthy Kalamazoo County on April 3rd, 2018, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners recognizes June 2023 to be Justice Against Bullying at Schools Awareness Month from this day forward, and encourages all Kalamazoo County residents to recognize and support justice against bullying at schools for strengthening our community and holding on to promise for everyone, especially the school-aged youth of Kalamazoo County.
There is a motion supported by Commissioner Hepler. Clerk Cox, would you please take role?
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Next, item E. Commissioner Morales, did you wanna read?
Anything for my Chair Hall. All right. Proclaiming June 2023 Pride Month in Kalamazoo County. Whereas June 2023 marks the fifty-fourth year anniversary for the Stonewall uprising. Whereas the Stonewall uprising has led to the commemoration of June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Whereas Outfront Kalamazoo has served the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual community of southwest Michigan for the past thirty years. Whereas during that time, the LGBTQIA+ community has grown in the face of adversity in the face of adversity to become a more safe, welcome, and visible part of the citizenry of Kalamazoo County. Whereas the people of Kalamazoo, including the city of Kalamazoo, city of Portage, Kalamazoo Township, and Oshimo Township have actively supported their LGBTQIA+ neighbors through a growing number of human rights ordinances that protect people from discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity in housing, employment, and public accommodations. Whereas Kalamazoo County accepts that full equality for the LGBTQIA+ community has nevertheless yet to be realized and continues to strive forward to end toward the end of LGBTQ LGBTQIA+ excuse me, homelessness in Kalamazoo, the end of LGBTQIA+ teen suicide and bullying in our society, and to the end of isolated and harassed LGBTQIA+ elders in our nursing homes and assisted living facilities, among so much more. Whereas Outfront Kalamazoo continues providing to LGBTQIA+ and allied community members and need the access to resources necessary to help all people of our community be happy, healthy, and productive members of society. And whereas Kalamazoo County and Outfront Kalamazoo celebrate the diversity of all sexual orientations and gender identities, embrace the county's principle of treating citizens with dignity, honesty, respect, and fairness, and promote a community where everyone can love who they are. Now therefore be it proclaim that Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes June 2023 as Pride Month in Kalamazoo County and encourages all Kalamazoo County residents to recognize and support Outfront Kalamazoo and Kalamazoo Pride for strengthening our community.
Second.
There is a motion and support. Clerk Cox, would you please take role?
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strzep.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gissler. Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Commissioner Mazur.
No.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
Sorry, got my mic off. Now we move into a request for a proclamation, annual World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Commissioner Strzep, are you ready for this one?
Me. Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Thank you. Proclamation, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity as vital contributors to our community, serving as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and more. Whereas in 2006, in support of the United Nations International Plan of Action, proclaimed today to recognize the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. And whereas June 15th, 2020, marks the 12th Annual World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. It's recognition promoting a better understanding the impact of abuse and neglect on older adults. And whereas the Kalamazoo County Area Agency on Aging 3A, along with the Kalamazoo County Elder Abuse Prevention Coalition, recognize the importance of taking action to raise awareness, prevent, and address elder abuse. And whereas we as a community have a collective responsibility to understand and respond to the need of all of our residents, including recognizing the importance of elder abuse prevention by promoting education and strengthening social supports for elders. And whereas everywhere there is everywhere there is justice, there can be no abuse. And it's up to all of us to ensure that proper social structures exist to engage all people, reducing the likelihood of abuse, isolation, and ageism. Whereas now therefore be it resolved that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners does support June 15th, 2022 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Kalamazoo County, and encourages all residents to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of Kalamazoo County.
A motion and support. Clerk Cox, would you please take role?
Commissioner Strzep.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Nine yes.
Okay. Commissioner Gissler, will you take us through the communications?
I'll be pleased to. Item G, Alger County Resolution to Instruct Representatives to Oppose All Firearms Control Legislation. H, Alger County Resolution declaring Alger County a constitutional Second Amendment sanctuary county. I, Alger County Resolution Supporting Dark Store Legislation. J, Alger County Resolution Urging Repair of the Cornwall Creek Flooding Dam. K, Osceola County Resolution to Instruct Our Representatives to Oppose All Firearms Firearms Control Legislation. And finally, L, Public Meeting Notice for Industrial Development District on Real Property Situated in the Village of Schoolcraft.
Okay. Are there any other communications received by commissioners? No? Okay. Then on the next approval of minutes, there is one correction on the minutes. Commissioner Gissler, I believe, gave the invocation and the pledge. But the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the 2000 or May 3rd, 2023 Committee of the Whole and the regular minute meeting minutes with the correction of the invocation and the pledge.
So moved.
It has been moved by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Commissioner Hepler. I believe this is a voice vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those oppose? All right, passes. Approval of the agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Vice Chair Ray?
To the agenda under non-consent at the proclamation recognizing June 2nd, 2023 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Kalamazoo County.
Yeah, we can. I don't think that needs to. I probably should check with corporate counsel, but does that need to be changed the agenda or can that just be added under new business?
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, you can do it both ways. So either way would be technically correct. You can move to add it to the agenda under there or you can move from the floor.
Okay. Well, there's a motion to add it to the agenda. The prove the agenda with that addition under non-consent, new business. Commissioner Gissler.
Yes. Could you have the vice chair tell us what it was again?
Sure.
Hey, no elder review shares.
The proclamation recognizing June 2nd, 2023 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Kalamazoo County. You're welcome.
I believe it was the one in our committee of the whole. The reason that we're moving this along and not going to the traditional is June 6th is our next meeting and June 2nd is the day, the holiday. So we missed it by three or four days. Angelina, our corporate counsel.
Thank you, Chair. There, in my mind, there may be another motion that needs to be made to amend the agenda.
Please do tell.
Um, I think you have it. The one with the pretty highlighting on the top. Thank you.
Okay, so we approved the change in the agenda. Now we have to approve the agenda. Is that what?
So Chair, what we need is someone to move that the board approve a request for acceptance of Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Child and Adolescent Health Center Program Implementation 2023 grant and allow for the health officer to electronically sign through eGrams on the county's behalf. We want to add that to new business.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had that in my new business thing, not through the agenda change. But yeah, the chair will entertain a motion. Actually, I'll just give this to Mr. Hepler. Can you read that? I can't make sure.
The language for a motion to be made, what am I reading here?
Okay, so my apologies. I tried to give you a document that explains like what we're doing. And then I also gave the chair instructions that basically said to make the motion when we get to new business from the floor, which is one option. But we were supposed to amend the agenda was the understanding.
Let me read for motion one.
Yes.
Yes, please.
That's all you had to say. Just read it, Jeff. Okay, I got it. Thank you. I move that the board approved the request for acceptance of a Michigan Department of Health and Human Services HDHHS Child Health Center Program Implementation 2023 grant and follow for follow the the health officer. Allow the health officer to electrically sign through eGram of counties on the county's behalf.
And that was the email that was in our packet but wasn't in our specific clerk. Is there a support? There is a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those oppose? All right, that is now part of our agenda under new business as well. So we, now we need a motion to approve the agenda. Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now in a public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board of commissioners. Please give us your name and address and you have up to three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Commissioners Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Ray, Vice Chair Hepler, and all of our county commissioners. Thank you so much for the resolution, the proclamation for, I believe, I could be wrong, but I want to say it's the fourth year in a row. It could be fifth. I also want to just amend the resolution to say that that was in originally wrote in 2015, and so we have actually served about 2,200 people from 2015 to date. This is Jabs Club. Many of our members, and we are just really, really grateful. We know June is a full month of activities and events to raise awareness about justice against bullying at school. And we have, of course, invitations for you all to join us. We have an event every Wednesday in the month of June. And so you all are definitely invited. We would love to see you come out and support. Thank you so very much. It's always a pleasure to get this resolution in front of the month of June. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have anything? Thanks.
Thank you, guys. I, I think we have an outline.
What's that?
Don't, you don't have to take it, Tracy. Just.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tracy Hall. I live in the, no offense to all the eight of you. I live in the best district, District 3. Former chair's district, so he feels this as well. I just wanted to say thank you all for passing our pride proclamation once again. It is really an honor, especially coming from this body, because I think I didn't need Vice Chair Ray's pastor friend, brother-in-law, to tell me to tell anybody. I love his advice. Tell somebody you love him, but I love you all. Commissioner Mazur, I even love you. So for all of you, I just want to say thank you. And Gwyneth, not that I'm keeping track, I think this is year number seven because pride, jabs, and Rick and Martha, we've kind of all gone hand in hand together because it was a busy month for me. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
My name is Rick O'Million. I live in Cooper Township. I'm part of the group that's planning where orange National Gun Balance Awareness Day events in June. Appreciate you considering the resolution today. It's important to a lot of us, others in this room, too, know how important it is. And I think it has been seven years about. So just want to, our appreciation for each year considering this, talking about, and voting on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to address?
Hello, my name is Christine Babcock, and I live in the Oakland neighborhood. I am really grateful for you all passing the pride proclamation, especially those of you who probably had to think about it a little bit harder. I come from a conservative family. I moved to a progressive space so that I could feel safer. And so having a county government that says that I belong here is really meaningful to me. And I thank you all for your vote. And Tracy says hi.
Good evening. I am Molly Bakum. I am here on behalf of the Kalamazoo Conservation District and the Kalamazoo County Farm Bureau tonight. I am a resident of Oshmo, but I came tonight to invite all of our commissioners and chairs. The Kalamazoo Conservation District with the Kalamazoo County Farm Bureau is hosting. It's under a new name, but it's the County Commissioners Tour. I think John's been on a few of them. So this year it's called the Kalamazoo Conservation District Next Generation of Agriculture Tour. And so I have saved the dates for all of you since we weren't able to mail them, and we'll have formal invites coming, but it's basically, we would like to highlight the diversity of Kalamazoo agriculture, looking at new agricultural technologies that help with conservation practices, regenerative agricultural practices, and really to provide an opportunity for you to meet and get to know some of our awesome farmers here in Kalamazoo County. So I wanted to pass those along and also wanted to let you know that the Kalamazoo Conservation District is doing a series of free scrap tire recycling events again this summer. So we have three different dates. If you go to kalamazooconservation.org, you can find more information. So anyone who's a Kalamazoo County resident is able to recycle tires. They're for passenger vehicle tires or lawn mowers, but nothing larger than that. So it's a free event. So thank you so much. I look forward to seeing all of you at the Commissioners Tour and sending out formal invites soon. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing?
Hi, Commissioners. Thanks for having this meeting tonight. I want to thank all the commissioners. I wanted to talk to about the, just share gratitude about the Kalamazoo County Housing Grant you know, passed last year. Better World Builders, it's a company I own here. We're based here in Kalamazoo County. We're based in the city of Kalamazoo. We were afforded a grant of $75,000 to help the city of Galesburg and improve housing in the city of Galesburg. We use those funds to identify energy efficiency opportunities as well as resiliency in the homes that were in the city of Galesburg. We affected seven households on Washington Street in the city of Galesburg. One of those households is with us today. I'd like to introduce her in just one minute, but what we did was we used the funds to help remove some barriers to help us to coordinate with some other agencies. Kalamazoo, excuse me, the CHASM, the Community Action Agency for the Weatherization Program. And we coordinated with the city of Galesburg and use the county Kalamazoo. And we coordinated with the city of Galesburg and use the Kalamazoo County, the housing funds to help improve the households there. One of the households is is the Stacy Heighton's household, and I'm going to introduce her. When I came into their household, I'm just going to give her a little little introduction, because Stacy and her, Tracy and her husband Steve have a beautiful house that's filled with love. They have adopted and brought in four of their, four of their grandkids, grandchildren into their household. As Commissioner Wheeler was talking about the foster care programs, this this was, I think, a really almost a piece where they had that love for their family and they they continue to embrace it. This grant helped us take, take and transform their house. In fact, I'm going to share some of these pictures. Just a few before and after pictures on there. But what we did in that household is we we took out a lot of the other unhealthy safe insulation in that household. And we made the household a lot healthier and more energy efficient, and we were able to bring out the beauty that's inside that household and well, as well as transform that to the outside of that household. So if you don't mind, I'd like to bring up Ms. Heighton. So come on up. It's okay. You're good, too. Come on up. Yeah. So Tracy, would you mind sharing with with the group here, who lives in your household?
Me, my husband Steve, Camden, and Kayden, and Riker, and many. Those are our four grandkids.
And before you went through this process, what was, what was, how did your house feel before, before we started during work?
Cold. Cold, no insulation, and the floors, the bedrooms. And now with this project all done, it's hot. It's warm. Our ceramic tiles are not icebergs now.
And and just one last piece, you know, how did you feel that, like, the impact on your your heating bill?
A big impact. It went down a hundred and twenty dollars, and that was just the one month. I haven't got another month yet, so, but yeah, just the one month. That was a big impact.
And at the Heighton household, they also used a lot of wood, wood burning heat to also supplement their their household heat. So that wasn't.
Right, but we, we didn't use our, we didn't use the wood stove during the time that they, you guys were working only twice. And then so we could see what the gas bill would be.
We wanted to thank the Commissioners for for passing such a progressive bill and passing and recognizing that housing is such an important issue in our community. And by continuing to help elevate the every individual household within our community, the way we can make it every household more healthier and more energy efficient can also help increase the 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 love that that's shared in this household. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There any other citizens wishing to address the board? Administrator Catlin, can you advise us pre-recorded messages or hands raised?
Yes, we have three recorded messages. We'll play those very soon, Chair. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Cooper, and my address is twenty-one oh six Helen Avenue in Portage. I'm leaving this public comment and requesting that it be shared at both the four P M. and seven P M. Kalamazoo Board of Commissioners meetings on Tuesday, May sixteenth. I'm calling to voice my opposition to Kalamazoo County funding for the YWCA Kalamazoo Comprehensive Reproductive Health Fund, which is being reviewed in the budget process at this time. I strongly oppose the use of taxpayer funds to pay for abortions under this YWCA grant request or at any time. Abortion is the intentional killing of a preborn baby and goes against the teachings of all Bible-based religions, including my Roman Catholic faith, and also goes against the beliefs of all American citizens as expressed in our Declaration of Independence, which states, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Babies are persons who have the right to life in the United States of America. If funding is given to this YWCA grant request, at least three injustices will occur. First, the innocent lives of preborn babies will be violently ended. Second, the parents of these children will be harmed emotionally, spiritually, and even physically at times. And third, hard-earned taxpayer dollars will be unjustly spent for a purpose that goes against the will of the majority of the people and provides no benefit to the taxpayers. Here are some poll numbers from the past year. Seventy percent of Americans polled want significant limits on abortion availability. Sixty percent of Americans polled oppose using tax dollars to pay for abortions. Ninety percent of Americans polled support pregnancy centers. So it's clear that Americans want to limit abortion and do not want to use tax dollars to pay for abortions. I strongly support spending our tax dollars to help mothers and fathers choose life. Let's grant our tax dollars to pro-life pregnancy centers and immediately stop funding abortions with taxpayer dollars. In conclusion, I encourage you to please remember your responsibility to serve the best interests of the majority of citizens of Kalamazoo County and to carry out your duties accordingly. Thank you.
Hi, this is John Burhans. I'm a resident of Portage. I am calling to oppose the YWCA ability to spend our taxpayer dollars to fund abortions and gender care. This is totally against my beliefs as a Catholic. And God had created us the way he intended for us to live our lives, not to have it done onto us to change our identity or anything along those lines. Additionally, my tax dollars should not go towards funding this, since it is strongly against my beliefs. Thank you.
I'm Jeanette Robinsky, calling from Kalamazoo County. Please play this message at the four P M. meeting of the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners on May sixteen. As you proceed.
Thank you. Administrator Catlin, can you advise me if there's any hands raised on Facebook? I think it is.
Chair, thank you. There are no hands raised.
Right. That takes us into consent agenda. Vice Chair Ray, do you want to take us through consent agenda? And with item N added to that, the transfers and dispersments.
We got Facebook.
I don't know. Where are these people raising their hands? Is it Facebook? Oh, is it Zoom? Okay. I didn't know how that worked.
Okay, recommendations for approval of transfers and dispersments. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one seventy-six, request for approval of accounts payable and payroll dispersments. Under administration, twenty twenty-three sixty-one fifty-eight, request for approval of a position creation. Board of Commissioners, twenty twenty-three sixty-eighty-six, request for approval of appointment events. Kara Halli to the South Central Michigan Planning Council. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one eleven, request for approval of appointments of Mike Pratt, David Gareppy, and Travis Criss to the Kalamazoo County Remonumentation Peer Review Group. Twenty twenty-three, I'm sorry, that was funny. Sixty-one fifty-one, request for review and approval of physical year twenty-three going pro talent bond program administration with Michigan Works. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one eighty-two, request to approve Kalamazoo Metro SWAT agreement and authorize the chairperson of the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners, county sheriff, registered deeds to sign the IGA electronically. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one ninety-two, request and recommendation to adopt resolution to terminate the resolution, establish the Kalamazoo County Identification Card Program, and to adopt resolution to create the Larry Provanture Kalamazoo County ID Program and Larry Provanture Kalamazoo County ID Program Advisory Board as provided to the Board of Commissioners. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one ninety-three, request and recommendation to adopt the resolution to terminate the resolution to create the Environmental Health Advisory Council and to adopt the resolution to create Environmental Health Advisory Council as provided to the Board of Commissioners. Circuit Court, twenty twenty-three sixty-twenty-seven, request for approval to apply for the SWIFT Insure Sanctions Probation Program Grant with the State Court Administrative Office to fund the Kalamazoo County Mount Nine. Circuit Court SWIFT Insure Sanctions Program in two for Circuit Court Administrator Chad Kewish to serve as the authorizing official for the contract in the state of Michigan's DocuSign system. Clerks, twenty twenty-three sixty-one fifty-two, request for approval of the Larry Provanture Kalamazoo County ID Program Advisory Board Bylaws. Finance, twenty twenty-three fifty-nine ninety-five, request for approval and signature of a contract with Waste Management. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one nineteen, request for approval and signature of a contract with two ninety Sign Systems GSA Schedule. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one ninety-seven, request for approval of various budget adjustments and transfers, housekeeping, health and community service. Twenty twenty-three sixty thirteen, request for approval and signature of area agency on aging. Three A's purchase of service contract extension number two for eighteen vendors. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one seventeen, request for approval and signature of amendment number one to area agency on agent three A vendor contract with MRC Industries Incorporated. Twenty twenty-three fifty-nine fifty-nine, request for approval of one, the area agency on aging. Three A Division partnering with the Veterans Service Office to establish a senior veterans' vision hearing and dental program. And two, a position creation. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one oh nine, request for approval of a fee schedule for the family planning clinic. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one sixty-nine, request for one, acceptance and signature of the Michigan Medical Marijuana Operation and oversight grant, and two, a position elimination creation. Twenty twenty-three fifty-nine seventy-seven, request for acceptance of Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Child and Adolescent Health Center Program Implementation, twenty twenty-three grants. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one oh two, request for approval to apply for CDC Great Enhancing STI and Sexually Sexual Health Clinic Infrastructure. Housing, twenty twenty-three sixty forty-three, request for approval for the twenty twenty-three housing recommendations on the categories of multifamily, single-family, and rehab. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one oh one, request for approval and signature of the Third Amendment to the lease agreement with list for space within administration building. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one oh five, request for approval and signature of a grant extension with Better World Builders Human Resources. Twenty twenty-three sixty forty-eight, request for approval of AFS CME ADP Letter of Understanding Juneteenth Holiday. Twenty twenty-three sixty forty-nine, request for approval of AFS CME Airport Letter of Understanding Juneteenth Holiday. Twenty twenty-three sixty fifty, request for approval of UAW Juvenile Probation Letter of Understanding Juneteenth Holiday. Twenty twenty-three sixty fifty-one, request for approval of P L A M Juvenile Home Letter of Understanding Juneteenth Holiday. Twenty twenty-three sixty eighty, request for approval of KCSA Letter of Understanding Juneteenth Holiday. Twenty twenty-three sixty twenty-six, request for approval of internship reimbursement agreement with Western Michigan University. Twenty twenty-three fifty-seven twenty-two, request for approval of changes to policy four point zero one to align pay frequency countywide and streamline the associated processes in H R and the E R P system. Parks and Expo Center. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one oh seven, request for approval of position creation planning. Twenty twenty-three sixty-one eighteen, request for approval, one, to accept a twenty twenty-three remonumentation grant through the state of Michigan. And two, to authorize the Director of Planning and Development to electronically sign the state grant agreement. Sheriff, twenty twenty-three sixty forty-five, request for approval of position changes. I move that the consent agenda items we voted on at one time by a roll call vote and be considered as the consent agenda items by the board.
Is a motion and support. Clerk Cox, will you please take role? You can't discuss, I would like to, I would like to discuss this so much, because I think we got a permanent person here. But we can't, we can't discuss consent agenda per Roberts rules.
Commissioner Strubs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Now I can discuss. That was amazing. You just ran right through that. Okay. Sure, John.
I just wanted to compliment Vice Chair Ray, because I think that's the first time anybody's had to say remonumentation in the same thing twice. Well done.
And the names, she got, she got most of those names like spot on. I, I, that was good. That was good. Okay, on unfinished business and general orders, we have a couple. The chair will entertain a motion that the board approve the request for acceptance of Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, M D H H S, Child and Adolescent Health Center Program Implementation, twenty twenty-three grant, and allow for the health officer to electronically sign through egrams on the county's behalf. Uh-oh, Counselor, I did something.
I'm still seated. So this one is for, the motion that you just read goes under the new business, and you put it under unfinished business and general orders. So there's nothing under unfinished business and general orders unless you have something.
The chair knows of none. I thought we had moved on. Is there any unfinished business and general orders? Okay, now we're moved on to new business, non-consent. Do I have to read that again? Okay, the chair will entertain that motion. No, I. No, I. So moved by Vice Chair Ray, supported by Vice Chair Hepler. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? All right, the motion carries. Now we have a national gun day. Presentation thing somewhere. I. I don't have the motion in front of me or I would read it up. Counselor, do you have help? Can you help us? No.
Yes, I can. I apologize. I was. I was looking at something else. You want the National Gun Violence Proclamation?
Yeah, I believe it was in our committee of the whole. If somebody has it to read. Okay, Vice Chair is going to read it. She's gonna. She's doing a great job.
All right, so I vote that we adopt the proclamation recognizing June 2nd, 2023 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Kalamazoo County.
There is a motion by Vice Chair Ray, supported by Commissioner Morales. Discussion, Commissioner Strubs.
Can we take an opportunity to read it into the record?
That's a corporate counsel's question. Should we? Do we need to read that into the record?
Chair, Commissioner Strubs, it's not required, but certainly, you know, the members' request is in order.
I think you're gonna have to do it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So the resolution is states declaring first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first day in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, Kalamazoo County, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and declare that we as a county must do more to end this public health crisis. Whereas every day more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas in Michigan, which has 1,382 gun deaths every year with a rate of 13.7 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that cost the state 16.8 billion each year, of which 380.5 million is paid by taxpayers. Michigan has the 25th highest rate of gun deaths in the US. Whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities and counties across the nation, including in Kalamazoo County, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's and commission's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors, elected officials, and law enforcement officers in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources know their communities best and are most familiar with the local criminal activity and how to address it and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country. Increased calls to domestic violence hotlines and an increase in city gun violence. Whereas in 2023, Hadiya Pendleton was shot and killed at the age of 15. And on June 2nd, 2023, to recognize the 26th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, born on June 2nd of 97, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange to tribute to, one, Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence, and two, the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They choose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd, the first Friday in June in 2023, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 2nd, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence, pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. It resolved that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners declares first Friday in June, June 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. I move that. Or, thank you.
There is a motion supported by Commissioner Hepler. Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler.
No.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strubs.
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
All right, the motion passes. Next up is public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name and address, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kevin McGraw. I'm the CEO of River of Cadis Development. Address is 1038 Trowbridge, East Lansing, Michigan. I was on a consent agenda tonight, and I also was impressed by the reading. I was following along as much as I could. But we are the developers of what's going to be River's Edge over on Harrison Circle, which is going to bring 228 affordable housing units, which is, which exceeds the last three years that have been done in the city. We're very proud of it. We've been working on it over six years with Mesta Eagle because there are two very contaminated pieces of property with PFOS, which we have very much experience with cleaning up. One of them, city-owned property, so we're very proud of it. Everybody's been working very hard. We want you to know. We appreciate what you did tonight. I also wanted to thank Mary Balcomah at the Housing Department, the City of Kalamazoo as well, and all the agencies that have been helping us. It's been a long road, and we're still hopeful to start environmental cleanup and site work this fall. So thank you very much and. Ever, the City of Portage. Am I out of time already? Mary Balcomah and all of your staff, Kevin and others, have been very supportive of our efforts. And I also just want to comment on the meeting tonight. It was a pleasure to sit here and watch good government in action here in our county seat. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Beth McCann. I live at 5308 Penrose Lane in Ashdodamo. And tonight I'm here as the Executive Director of Kalamazoo Neighborhood Housing Services. I too want to thank you for passing the millage request tonight. We are, for over 40 years, KNHS has been dedicated to fostering homeownership and revitalizing neighborhoods. And the funds that you approved tonight will help us build more homes in Kalamazoo Township next year, as well as do critical home repair. So we thank you very much for being so supportive of all the housing initiatives that we have going on in our community. And also our thanks to Mary Balcomah and her support as we we move ahead towards eradicating some of the major issues with affordable housing in our community. Thank you.
You're up, David.
All right. So I'm here representing the Lift Foundation this evening. As you will remember, you helped the Lift Foundation with our last project, which was Lodge House, which is now occupied. It was the renovation of a former motel, Knights Inn. And Lift Foundation, as you're well aware, has another project, more of a family project this time, that we're intending to complete here. Affordable housing, obviously, seriously in need of that here. And we really, really appreciate the support. One thing I would like to just remind everybody is that Lift Foundation is a 501(c)(3) organization. So we are, we do this work as a mission-based activity. And certainly, some things have to come into play. We're going to have to have Mista Award tax credits for this project, but.
And I'm being recorded in progress. So I want to keep, continue momentum of all this appreciation for housing and the efforts that you all supported, especially that of Mary and the grant committee. I represent Terry here, development group that put concept for the Kalamazoo Courtyard Community Program. And the intent there is to help females transitioning out of human trafficking and some of them with children as well into this 19-unit department complex. It will come with complete with supportive services to include workforce development opportunities, the full myriad of supportive programming to help with those transitions and a continuation of that support network. So again, 19 units, it's a small development, but it's going to be very intense in programming and services. Our partners consist of the YWCA Zero Day, which I'm the CEO of. That is the nonprofit veteran organization that does community revitalization projects. And we perform this type of work in other areas in the state and some private sector developers as well from your community. So we really want to appreciate, extend our appreciation.
Hi, my name is Terry Sapienga, and I'm an anti-human trafficking case manager at the YWCA. So I just wanted to say thank you to all you city commissioners and to Mary Balcomah. I like to call it the Duke Street Building Better Lives Project because to me, that's what it is. Our human trafficking survivors, domestic violence survivors, as well as sexual assault survivors, their number one priority is housing. And without that housing, if you can imagine staying eight, nine, 10 weeks in a shelter with multiple other, 74, 75 other survivors, it's very traumatizing. And with them coming out of that trauma, the number one thing that they request, and me being a survivor of human trafficking, domestic violence, and sexual assault myself, our number one desire is to have housing. A house where we get, a home where we can go in, turn the key. We don't have to worry about what's behind that door, what violence is behind that door. We can watch what we want to watch. We can listen to what we want to listen to. We can go where we want to go. And that is so, that gives us so much freedom. And with lived experience, the hope that that brings to our clients when they walk into their own apartment, and I do want to add this, we continue our supportive services until that survivor says, I'm empowered. I've got this. Thank you for your service. Deuces. If I need you, I'll call you, you know? So I just want to say one more thing is that when the clients move into their apartments, the day they move into apartments, the morning of, there's this, and take this down, there is this 401k organization called Sparrows Nest and Design. So they go in, they go in the apartment, they furnish the entire apartment, couch, living room, dining room table, beds, pitchers, showers. Everything is beautiful. And when I walk into, and my other coworkers walk into these clients' apartments to see their face, their tears, their excitement, their joy, and it's like, I want that couch. Can I get that bed? It is beautiful. So please go on Sparrow Nest and Design. And if you have any furniture, please donate it to them. These are two women who started this organization from Christian Reform Church here in Kalamazoo. And they do amazing jobs. So if you have anyone, please donate there. And like I said, the, make sure I didn't miss anything. I know my three minutes is coming up. Yeah, and I just want to say again, our clients with the supportive service. It's, it's, it's an amazing thing, and I can't thank you guys enough for those 19 units. And I haven't, those are 19 people, and I haven't even included the children. So I just want to thank you so much for what you've done. Mary, thank you. Thank, thank you, guys. I just, I just want to thank you. I just want to shout right now. And I do that because the pastor didn't. Hallelujah. Thank you. Hallelujah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Darnell Clay. I represent Valley Vision Construction. We've mentioned in the village. Just want to say first and foremost, I am so, so proud. You know, I'm born and raised in Kalamazoo. And as a, as a younger man, and it's been quite a challenge, I should say, as we've stepped into the development world, to kind of keep the wind behind our sails. And I just want to say thank you to the Commissioners, to Mary Balcomah, to other agencies involved with being encouraging. As, you know, everybody talks about the housing and the needs that are here. And we've been working behind the scenes for quite a long time. You know, we've renovated over 40 homes and put families back in homes all within the city of Kalamazoo over the past, you know, 10 years. You know, we've supplied over 126 full-time jobs for Kalamazoo residents on the north side, east side, south side. So we've been working hard behind the scenes, and now we've got some development at the forefront. And just to get the go-ahead and just to get the support that we've gotten when we've been looking for it and have gotten surprisingly negative feedback and pushback. And you can't do it, and we don't know. Maybe you should wait a while. We just want to say thank you for you guys saying, yes, you can. You get the go-ahead. And there's been people watching us, you know, closely that have seen us, you know, perform and come through and be trustworthy, incredible. And we just want to say thank you that, you know, we talk about Foster Care Awareness Month. And I look at that sign up there, and, you know, I was in the foster care system from the age of three until 15, in and out of 10 or about 10 or more foster homes. And every time I saw that sign, it was. It was, um. It was an envelope about court appearances or getting food stamp checks or you're getting moved to a different home. And every time we saw that symbol, it was kind of scary because it was something moving us in our lives, me and my two brothers. And today, it just come around all full circle to get that stamp from that sign. It just, it just, it's touched me in a personal way. But I just want to say thank you. I didn't realize how much encouragement was needed. I didn't realize how much encouragement was needed. Venturing off in the territory that people that may look like me may not be venturing off into. And just want to say thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Mary Balkama. Thank you even KNHS for supporting me and giving me an opportunity to knock one out of the park. Build a house for you and believe in me and say, oh, Darnell, you can do it. And delivering and when you see our names again, for us to continue to be a proud story that, you know, that we share together. So just thank you for making our dreams a reality. From being some of the, the biggest support that we need, you know, it, it causes us not to think about all the negative feedback and the pushback. The hesitancies and the, and the fears from everything and everywhere else. Because as I look around, I'm saying, we have all we need. And I just thank you so much for that. Thank you very much.
Any other citizens wishing to address the board?
Yeah, this is Mark Lee again from Better World Builders, Kalamazoo County resident. And I wanted to thank the, the board for granting extension to Better World Builders on behalf of the housing. It's such a, being, being here tonight, really glad I'm here because you hear some of the stories of how housing really impacts our, our folks in this community. And, and our community knows how to pull together. There's some great organizations. KNHS is one of them. Community Home Works is another one. The Weatherization Program, another one. But we'd like to see, continue to see more facilitation of, of us weaving our funds together, weaving our efforts together to continue to make housing more sustainable and more resilient in this county. And I just wanted to thank you for, for being, being on it and understanding that this is, is a very important issue. Thanks.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. My name is Mary Balkama. I'm your Housing Director. I'd like to thank you for your approval tonight. It's millions of dollars going into housing. I was doing kind of the quick math and it leverages up about $100 million of investment into our community. It's a really, really big deal. You know, some of the projects like the victims of human trafficking, the financing was really, really tight. They didn't know if they could get it to the finish line. And Commissioner Streb said, you know, that's near and dear to my heart, Mary. Can, do you think that we can give it the college try? So the developer came back again with the college try. We know these projects are hard. It doesn't go fast. You wanted to increase the capacity of BIPOC developers, make them energy efficient. I think we've hit a lot of the buttons that we set out to do. And so I thank you for your support, your encouragement. Commissioner Streb's, I know you're on the phone today with River Caddis. The deals are complicated. They take a long time to get to market. The city of Portage is ready. They have their land assembled. The $3 million over three years will give them a huge jump start on Portage and Stanley. And so this has been over two years in the, in the making, I believe. They have a strong community development team that will lead it. And our partners are all here tonight. You can hear their stories. And I think we have a really good lineup for what will happen today. There's a few projects that need to go in for tax credits in the fall. And with our advanced support, it really gives our state housing authority a lot of confidence in the project to award additional funding due to the increase in the interest rates and the increase in the cost of construction. So again, thank you. Thank you for your feedback. Thank you for their, for your support. I think in eight years, we'll be well ahead of the curve. And we will have completed a lot of the goals that the WE Upjohn Housing Study put forth. So again, thank you very much.
Hi, Commissioners. My name's Adam Ream. I'm representing Kalamazoo Valley Habitat for Humanity, the Director of Operations and Construction. And I just want to tell you how much I appreciate that approval tonight for the housing. It's really going to help our organization out. All of our staff really appreciate it. And it's really going to go towards furthering our home repair program and our new homeownership program. I want to thank Mary Balkama for helping us out, guiding us along the way. So I really can't express it enough. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Administrator, Chris Pradel here on behalf of Community Home Works. I'm our Executive Director.
I'm Kalen Humes. I'm from the city of Portage and I'm the Deputy Director at Community Home Works.
First want to start off by just saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. I can't begin to convey for our team who is so mission-driven. We see the faces of people we've had to turn away or couldn't receive help throughout the county because we weren't countywide. Tonight, you officially, after 14 years as a young organization, we are officially countywide. We hope to reach out soon as well to invite you. We want to invite you to meet our team and learn a little bit more about our organization. So if you have constituents who reach out who need assistance, then we can help. In 2022, we served 186 households in the city of Kalamazoo primarily alone. That was a 53% increase from the year prior. We served over 3,000 residents with our empowering education programs to teach people how to maintain and repair their home. Tonight, there's 11 people in our workshop area learning how to repair their lawnmowers. Simply put, there is no solution to the housing crisis without homeowner retention. And what that means is keeping people in the homes they already have. We know that without our services, there's really just two options for people. Either they live and reside in unsafe or unhealthy environments, or they become temporarily or permanently displaced. One of the greatest crises that our county is facing when it relates to housing and housing retention is the age of our housing stock. Last year, the average age of the house, homes that we served in the city of Kalamazoo was 99 years old. The oldest home was 142. With record-high interest rates with, for loans, credit cards, and with inflation at record high. The demand for us will continue to grow and continue to grow with Alice, especially Alice households within our county. I want to share just three really quick examples of families that we were able to scrounge funding to help outside of the city limits. And we had to scrounge to find funding to help these families. There's a family with a newborn with six other siblings in Comstock who flood, had a flooded basement, lost heat, water heater and needed environmental remediation. And an elderly man who was an Aneeman because he had had so many bed bugs, bed bug bites that we could not serve. We had a child who was in the NICU for over 200 days. And the first night coming home, their family lost heat. We're able to serve those people outside the city of Kalamazoo. These funds will continue to help families in our community with exact same scenarios like that and more who could need our help. And we're so grateful for your support.
I'll keep it short. It's really, I keep echoing a lot of what Chris said, but I really just want to say thank you. With the families that contact us that we have had to turn away in the past. It's always such a hard conversation and not knowing who to turn them to. And so being able to be that place that they can find service from now is, is going to be such a huge relief for our community. And so this vote that you guys voted yes on is really promoting healthy and safe living environments for our entire county. So thank you and thank you to Mary for your support too. We're just really looking forward to continue doing this work and expanding our reach, so.
And really just one last thing as well. We wanted to just make sure to share as well as just to think about, you know, the math for this. You know, the housing crisis requires solutions from every corner. And you see all that here tonight, right? I shared 186 families that we helped keep in their home last year. Imagine how expensive it would be to build 186-unit apartment complex for all those individuals who could potentially become displaced. And, you know, on average, we typically see in most homes we serve, we spend between three and maybe $7,000. And that's enough to, to keep that family in their home, you know? And so, you know, just keep that in mind, you know, in terms of the ROI, in terms of keeping people in their homes is a very cost-effective strategy to, as a solution in our housing crisis equation. So thank you so much. I'm super excited. Appreciate all of you so very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other citizens or residents wishing to address the board? Administrator Kalen, is there anybody on Zoom with their hands raised? I think we already did the pre-reported for this one.
Yes, Chair, I do not believe we have any hands raised at this time.
All right. Well, that takes me to Chairperson's report. Just a couple of things. One, it was really, really cool to see all these people coming to thank us usually at these kind of meetings that, that's not the case. But, but it's, it's really good to know that, that so much hard work and from previous boards that, that really put this on the ballot. Championed this, went out, came up with a plan to, to spend these monies and learn how to leverage those monies. And I think a big portion of that is you, Mary. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, second thing I wanted to talk to about was Prop 2. We're going to, Prop 2 was passed in 2020 and I've talked to a few commissioners about it. We in the state of Michigan are facing, in my opinion, just an epic, epic disaster. Coming from funding levels for being able to fund all the implementations of Prop 2. Nine days of early voting with a decentralized system. The ability to, to, to do that from every single township level. Townships in the Upper Peninsula aren't going to be able to afford nine days of early voting. We're going to have to regionalize. We're going to have to decentralize or centralize and not have a decentralized system, especially when it comes to early voting. Counties are going to be asked to do more. Right now, county clerks do not administer elections. Townships and local municipalities do. We're going, that is going to start having to change. And the first thing that's going to have to happen is the state legislature is going to have to become aware of this and really understand the problem. I do not think they do. I think we're going to have to lobby on behalf of a county. I think we're going to have to join with other municipalities, whether it be other counties or other local clerks. To really, when we talk to our legislative delegation in Lansing, to really reinforce how important this is. We've got a presidential primary in January of next year, the first election that this is going to be implemented. You're going to have CNN and MSNBC and Fox News and all these national organizations right outside our Kalamazoo County courthouse and clerk's offices all across the state. And it's going to slowly turn into an ever and ever and ever increasing disaster as these votes are counted and everything gets, gets played. I really think we need to talk to our quad, Joe Tate, Winnie Brinks, Matt Hall and Eric Nesbit. And we need to beg them and plead with them that this, the Jocelyn Benson has asked for funding to implement this. She said how much it's going to cost. I don't think we're getting any recognition whatsoever from Lansing that this is going to be a serious problem. And it's going to be on the front page of the Washington Post and every newspaper in January of next year if we don't take care of this and really address this now. So I, you know, working with some other organizations, I think that, you know, maybe this needs to be something that we put on our radar moving forward. As we talk to both our delegation in Lansing, as well as we try to prepare for the coming storm that's going to be happening from the implementation of proposal 2. But that is all. And then again, I'm going to have to thank you again, Mary, for not just for housing, but for everything from the budget to everything you've been helping us out with. Thank you so much. Nice, Chair.
An emotional night. I feel like Chair Hall is here. Tracy used to cry at every meeting. I also want to say thank you to the folks who showed up to say thank you. We put in a lot of time and effort to review applications to score them. Mary spends a lot of time, so thank you to her. It's really good to hear stories and how the, the decisions that we're making is actually impacting the community. So thank you for taking the time to come out. I want to say happy birthday to Tero and happy belated birthday to Commissioner Streb and Commissioner Hall. And then last but not least, MBHHS released their, the air quality report. They will be hosting an air quality town hall this Thursday, May 18th at Mount Zion at 5:30. I encourage commissioners and folks in the communities, especially those impacted by the odor, to come out and take some time to read the report. It's really, really long, 146 pages, but there is a summary. And you can get some of, you know, some of the good parts really quick, but I would encourage folks to take some time and just kind of read through there. Some of the recommendations are not so good in my opinion, especially as a North Side resident. So I encourage people to, to come out, voice your concerns, ask questions, if not for you, for your constituents. And that is all that I have. Thank you.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler.
Thank you, Chair. I do want to thank Mary for her hard work, her continuous hard work on getting housing. And all the people that were here tonight, taking the time to thank us. It was actually what she has done. But it's your hard work that's keeping people in their homes and making the homes a safer place for our good citizens to live, work and play. I think it's so important that we recognize the hard work of our administration and, and this team up here. It's not just a board. It's a team that works diligently to try to make Kalamazoo a great place to live, work and play. So thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming in tonight and have a safe week. Come back and see us again. Thank you. And, and for all the work that everybody's working on. I want to share with you that I was at the Central Dispatch, which this board is a member of. My colleague Dale couldn't be there that night. And we did get a clean audit from the auditors that did the audit on that. So that is a good thing. They did really well. There's a number of issues that are, are trending in this Central Dispatches. That is the key to keeping our community safe as they are the ones who dispatch our police, our fire, our medical folks out to help those when they're truly in need. So it's very important that we stay in touch with them and work with them. They have several issues that are upcoming and we'll keep you posted as things move along. I should know this, being in law enforcement for the few years that I've been there. That the 15th of this month is Memorial Law Enforcement Day. We've got a resolution that we'll see probably in a couple of weeks, but this is Law Enforcement Memorial Week. And so please take a moment to thank those men and women that are out there every day, working to try to keep us safe as we are learning that gun violence, as we talked about tonight, is killing a lot of people, injuring a lot of people and causing a great deal of harm. Throughout our county, there's many good people that own guns and their second amendment rights need to be protected. And I appreciate that resolution saying that. I, we want to protect those folks that are doing the right thing and stop the ones that aren't. And this is a, a very complex issue and it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of hard work to, to resolve it. It's not something that's going to get done overnight. And we need to be looking at the different aspects of what we have to do to keep our citizens safe. But also thank all those men and women of the military who protect us abroad and our firemen and medical staff that you see out there doing what they can. As Memorial Day is coming up, there'll be many, many celebrations for those folks. One that I go to every year, have directed traffic out at Fort Custer on M96, taking my life into my hands as I try to get cars in and out of there safely without any injuries. And but we honor those men and women. There'll be celebrations throughout our county and throughout our state. So please, if you get a chance, get out and support those folks who, because freedom is, is not free. It was very expensive. It's cost many men and women their lives and they deserve that honor that we share for them. Thank you.
Administrator Kalen.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tim, Commissioners, audience. This evening, I, I think that we all hope that our meetings go like this all the time. It's, it was, it was really cheery and I, I enjoyed it. So I wanted to share a few things with the board and public. And just wanted to, first of all, thank the Board of Commissioners as the, as you all know, and as the public knows, that's, I've been on the job one year now, as of May 2nd. So, but, so I wanted to obviously express my appreciation to this, this body and the previous body that hired me. You know, really love this job, love my coworkers, love coming in every day. And so, as you know, a lot of work goes into making board policies and initiatives come to fruition. And, you know, staff work tirelessly behind the scenes to make those priorities a reality and that they're executed efficiently. You know, staff work tirelessly behind the scenes to make those priorities a reality and that they're executed efficiently and effectively. So I count on not only myself, but especially my coworkers and you all and carrying out those as, you know, as best as we can. I think that we all see that employees have really embraced a new style of approachability. Within my office, especially in our leadership habits are really trickling down in this county government slowly but surely. So again, I just wanted to express my appreciation. I did, I always think of things after the fact, after I say them. And I wanted to get back to Commissioner Gissler's question on the audit and bond rating. I did not answer your question. Somehow I thought about it as we were going through the meeting. So because we pay our bills on time at this time and with the audit and the preparation, the what that our auditors have been working on. We don't, we don't believe that that would affect our bond rating, the work that's been transpiring, but they will present to the board hopefully by the second meeting in June. So we should hopefully be in good shape. We know that there will be some, some comments that'll be expressed and those will be passed along to the board. I want to remind the board that there's a legislative breakfast being hosted by Metro Transit scheduled this Friday at 9:00 AM. If you did not receive the invite to that, just let me know and I'll be able to put you in touch with Metro. Wanted to share some information on the Gun Violence Summit that Vice Chair Ray, the Community Foundation, Health Officer Rutherford and I. Attended in Milwaukee towards the latter part of last week over the weekend. It was really quite eye opening. There were organizations and local governments from across the country. Mainly based in the Wisconsin area or the Midwest area, but I think we had folks all the way from Atlanta. We had some Michigan representation, obviously from Kalamazoo, from Flint, Grand Rapids was there, Detroit. So I think, I think that was the Michigan representation. And really, one thing that resonated with me was it encompasses the various strategies and approaches. That are required to tackle this gun violence and community violence issue in Kalamazoo County. An example that really illustrated this, this sentiment was, it really resonated around intent to commit violence. And how those need to be, the strategies need to be really reviewed around those. So for example, someone mentioned that a person intending to shoot someone just to do it requires a different strategy and approach than someone. Who is committing an assault to protect their territory. So one is, you're really intending to commit that violence for whatever reason it wants, because they only know how to protect themselves with violence. So the way you approach that is different. And that was really just impactful to hear. There are really a lot of real life examples that were shared and, and really what hit home to us was just the amount of money that is required to tackle this issue. I think a number that the Kalamazoo Community Foundation actually put out was $3 billion for Kalamazoo County. And there's this a lot, there's a tremendous amount of money that's required. There's a tremendous amount of collaboration and partnerships that are required. We as the county government can't do it alone and we have to count on our, our, our collaboration and our community partners to help. So we need the philanthropic or yeah, philanthropic and community resources, financial resource to help us to mitigate. Community violence in meaningful ways. Next week, I wanted to let you know that I will be attending the Michigan Association of County Administrative Officers Conference next week in Crystal Mountain. So I should hopefully, when I come back, be able to share a pretty good legislative update with the board and its implications on our 2024 budget process. There's a lot of things that the state's budget is including to increase revenue sharing for counties and other things. Such as childcare fund implications that'll have implications on our budget to hopefully assist us along the way as we try to increase services and impact in Kalamazoo County. MAC has been, Michigan Association of Counties has been working extremely hard on lobbying efforts to increase revenue dollars remitted to the county by the state. And then also kind of touching on the Prop two funding, I'll be able to ask our lobby, our MAC lobbyist about that. And hopefully, I'm sure that they're advocating for additional funding to be remitted to the county on that. I wanted to share that the Road Commission's new facility is making tremendous progress. If you haven't had a chance to ride by there, just go take a quick peek and I can get in touch with the Managing Director Joanna Johnson. To schedule a board tour for that. We're doing the same for them for our Justice Center tour. So I'm sure they'll, they'll, they'll return the favor. And to answer your question, Commissioner Mazur, it's actually $65 million. I was thinking of the, the, the bond proceeds. So $65 million project, pretty impactful. And then lastly, the Memorial Day Parade, I think I put it on everyone's calendar, scheduled May 29th. And it's hosted by the Rotary Club of Kalamazoo Sunrise, and that begins at 10:00 AM. Sort of meeting around the Michigan Avenue area. I think it's Michigan Avenue and Rose. So wanted to share those thoughts. And again, my appreciation goes out to this body and happy to take any questions.
Any questions from Commissioners? See none. Commissioner Delu, do you want to start with members' time?
Well, I just appreciate all the positivity in the room tonight. I'd say it was very good to hear. But I also want to echo what Commissioner Hepler said. This is National Police Week. Every May 15th is National Police Memorial Day. So far this year, we've had 42 line of duty deaths in the United States of 136 days. So on average, about every third day, a police officer dies in the line of duty. I started at the Kalamazoo Police Department in 1974. I couldn't even imagine any police officer in Kalamazoo being assaulted, let alone killed. In the last 12 years, we've had two police officers die after being shot. Officers of Potter and Deputy Proxmire. So I, all I have to say is like the police or not, just when you see them out there, just be grateful they're out there. Because especially in this day and age with all the violence, it really is the thin blue line, just protecting people like us from. The people we don't want to have contact with. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I have three items I want to mention. One, I want to emphasize the great job Molly Buckham did. Talking about this tour coming up, sponsored by the Farm Bureau and the Conservation District. I had a chance to attend their last one of these tours and for somebody that knows precious little about farming, wow, what an eye opener. It was really worth the time and effort and energy and they do it upright. I also want to thank, because you mentioned it first, Jeff, Dale certainly followed along with Memorial Day and parades and things like that. I can't help but think about Frank Warren, who you and John know. Boy, did he chastise me because I was never at Fort Custer. I was always at the Memorial Day service somewhere else. And as far as Frank was concerned, that was it. You were there or you were nowhere. So good wishes toward Frank wherever he may be at this point. And lastly, a quick one, wanted to thank Tammy for handling remonumentation so, so beautifully. That was very well done. Thank you.
She set the table. Commissioner Mazur.
Well, I would also like to thank Mary Balkama for all the work she's done. And last week, I've got another one more item. Last week, I attended the Kalamazoo Junior Symphony Prep Strings Concert at Loy Norx. And there, there were about 72 members on that stage in three different ensembles. The ages range from elementary through high school. The Kalamazoo Junior Symphony Orchestra, which is the, the, the top group for KJASO. They have about 75 members and they performed their season finale on March 30th at our beautiful Channery Auditorium right downtown. Just a few facts for you, the KJASO was founded in 1939. So they've been around for a while. And according to their website, they, the orchestra students represent 42 schools across 23 communities. So I would imagine that each of our districts probably have students who are members of the KJASO. So I would encourage all of you to attend. They are done for the season of, their next concert will be on Sunday, November 5th at Channery Auditorium. You would be amazed at the level of musicianship that these kids accomplish. So I hope you'll attend. Thank you.
Commissioner Mounds.
Thank you, Chair. So tonight was really emotional. For those that know me, I don't show very much emotion, but. It just, it's a testament to the leadership of this board. When I came on in 2020, I don't know that we could have passed some of these things. Or these items that we discussed tonight. So a huge shout out to Community Homeworks and Chris Prado and his staff. I was on that board three years ago and to see where they've come now is amazing. To be able to, to host the entire county is amazing because we were siloed and can only serve a certain population. Also to Mary Balkama, thank you. She, she pushed us as well with a lot of the scoring we had to do. Lot of questions and it was a lot of work. It wasn't something that you could just put a 10 or a five on. I think we worked her brain a lot to make sure that these things got passed. To Commissioner Ray, thank you for trailblazing gun violence and what we're doing in the community. Tonight was a lot of trigger points and revisited trauma for me. For those who don't know, you know, Commissioner Ray lost her brother. That was one of our first conversations. But when people always ask me how I got to Kalamazoo is because my father got shot. And my mother said, we're coming here as a safe haven and to leave a place where, we're from Bridgeport, Connecticut, which is 45 minutes from New York City. To see the violence that was happening there over 40 years ago happened in my own city is very scary. I had a parent come in my office last week and share that her son had got shot in the face and half of his face was gone. And he wanted to come back to school. I mean, his face is mutilated and he wants to come to school and as, and she sat there, not one tear down her eyes. She works in Bronson Hospital and she said, you know, God prepared me for this work so that I can continue to take care of my son. So to Ms. Terry and to Mr. Clay for sharing your vulnerability, I too am a survivor. And housing was one of the things that was a struggle for me growing up. So to be in your house and turn that key. When I got my first apartment, I laid on a teddy bear that I won from Cedar Point for six months. And so I got my taxes to buy furniture. So I didn't even care that I didn't have a bed. I slept on that floor with a cover, not a ramen noodles. So the fact that we have a safe haven for one of the most disrespected beings, which are women in our bodies. To come out of that trauma and get an apartment and move forward is big. Mr. Clay, you could have taken a whole different route. So I say to you and Ms. Terry, it was, we got a good prayer. Thank you again, Commissioner. Because God was in the house tonight. For those of you who don't believe, you better jump on board. But that was an example of being delayed and not denied. Your stories have come full circle and thank you so much for sharing them as well. Housing is my passion. And I just, again, I'm thankful for Pride Month. God is in the house because Commissioner Gissler said anything for Tracy. But what Commissioner Gissler didn't know, him doing that blessed a whole population of people who have lost faith in a certain party. So thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you to our folks that serve. Appreciate you. There is a fine line with police and the brutality that comes along with that, especially among black men in America. So, you know, it's, it's not a disrespectful thing, but we do halt when we see police officers because sometimes things are agitated. And we're not treated the same as other cultures. But I think tonight, this board showed our efforts toward diversity and inclusivity without color, race, gender or anything, especially with this housing movement. So I won't continue to give a dissertation, but thank you and thank you to Chair Taylor for your leadership. Again, in the beginning, it was like, oh, shoot, but I still have old shoot moments. But I think through your leadership, you have created a safe haven to where you're open and we have our moments. But you yield to us and I appreciate that because you could be rogue and it could be, you know. Yeah, anyway, thank y'all. Good night.
Commissioner Stretz.
It's, it has been a powerful meeting tonight and, and Monty, those are beautiful comments that you shared this evening. You can, you can feel it in the space with us tonight. So again, gratitude to all that attended and I want to extend that gratitude, you know, to all of the residents and citizens of Kalamazoo County. That supported this housing millage, you know, for us to be here and working on this, trying to solve these complex issues on behalf of this community. You know, speaking for myself, and I think I speak for the rest of this board, that is an honor for us to be in that work for you. And this community, this is an investment that you have made in each other. And you can hear tonight the powerful stories. I also am a survivor. I'm so excited to hear about Duke Street Moving Ahead. I mean, there are so many amazing things happening here. I was on the phone earlier today with Sheriff Fuller about another issue and, you know, just speaking to, to gun violence in this community. You know, just talking about the deaths, murder, suicide that just occurred in the last few days within this community. At the root of violence and, and death is disconnection from one, from each other. From the loss of our capacity to reach out and extend love to one another. And the trauma that people suffer and endure in this community that limits their ability to respond in constructive ways. And they reach out because violence has been the teacher in their lives and we can change that together. We will change it together. Billions of dollars might be needed, but it starts free in here. And I want to thank all of you for being part of that. Reminder for our Metro Legislative Breakfast on Friday, we'll liaison to that, please come. Exciting opportunities exploring Metro or micro transit that we'll be talking about in this community. The air quality issues that Vice Chair Ray lifted up, these are intergenerational impacts that have been impacting. Quality of life for a long time and must be addressed. Please participate in that. But another venue for that, the Environmental Health Advisory Council through the county is another body. That's advocating and interacting with environmental health and it's another opportunity for community to interact on this type of issue. We, our agenda is not released yet, but I heard we had expected to hear at our next upcoming meeting, which is on June 14th at 9:00. From Eagle related, you know, more details around air quality issues. So let's stay involved, let's stay connected, let's be this community together. We have so much good in front of us. Thank you.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Thank you. I just want to echo everybody's sentiments and say thank you to those who came out. And were vulnerable and told your stories to all of us when it comes to the housing. It's really appreciated and thank you to Mary for all of your hard work. And I'm a new kid on the commission and so she sat down with me and did step by step, which is really helpful. So, and, and thank you for showing up. It means a lot to us.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.